Louis, I think we're ready to go ahead and get started when you are.
Okay, before we do that, Esten, have you posted a note so that if anyone joins the old meeting that they'll know to come here?
Let me double check with Courtney about sort of getting the word out for folks going in the old place.
Okay, thank you.
That is a great question, Louis. Thanks for thinking of it.
We'll call this meeting to order. It's our regular board meeting for July 14th. We're beginning at seven o'clock. And I think the first question is, do we have any revisions to the agenda? And I think we do.
Yeah, so I would like to recommend that we actually move, let me look for the wording on it here, I apologize. I would recommend we do the 2021, our Welcome Back to School Plan right away, because I think that's what people are most interested in. And that way also that if folks want to provide any comment, once they hear what that plan is, the public comment will follow it, and they'll be able to actually comment on what we are planning, and it will hopefully be a more useful way of input. So that would be my recommendation if the board supports that. I would move us to the, to going through our opening plan right off the bat.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to make the reopening plan an action item? Since there are...
So, and there will be, as we go through the plan, at the end of it, depending on your feedback, I may be requesting some actions from you. But I need to get your feedback first to see if there will be any actions required. So if we can hold that thought, and then we can potentially do action after, we may have to have an item, depending on the board's thoughts on what we present.
Okay.
So we anticipate this presentation, it's a long slide presentation, just to give folks an idea. How long do we anticipate in the presentation itself?
I would anticipate the whole presentation. Hopefully, we can get through it in under an hour. We'll do our best to move through it. There's a lot there. We wanted to make sure to inform our community of what we've been working on all summer, and what our plans are moving forward, both immediately and into the future beyond that. So it's, it's pretty comprehensive. And there's a lot of information there, but we will keep it as, as fast as we can while still informing people about where we are with things.
My next question, and I apologize to all those listening, but we, we have to take this through. Do we want to take board, if we have 600 people who signed up for board for, for a comment, and I don't know that we do, but we're gonna have a lot of...
No, we have like, we have like 10 or 12 who have signed up for comment, something like that.
Manageable. My, the other question though is whether we want to have the board's interaction in questions about the plan prior to public comment or after the public comment?
Yeah, we can certainly have more discussion after the public comment, so you can react to ideas you hear and whatnot. That would be, that would be fine. We could kind of split the item in two. Okay.
We'll revise the agenda in that way. And then the next question I find is, we need to approve the minutes that were presented from the last meeting, of which I don't have the date.
Well, let's go ahead. I mean, if we're revising the agenda to start right away with the presentation, we can go ahead and do that, and then we can jump into all that other business right after, if that's okay with you. All right. Okay, so Maggie, we're gonna go ahead and jump right into the presentation. Are you gonna kick us off with that?
That was the plan.
All right, take it away.
Okay. Esten, are you gonna present the screen, or you want me to throw it up on, from my screen?
If you'll go ahead and do that. And that's why Adina's having trouble getting in, so you might need to speak for her piece.
Okay, that's fine.
She just got in.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, I can't share my screen, Esten.
Give me a minute, I'll call it up.
Okay.
I just made you the co-host. Maybe that'll let you do it.
Oh, there we go. All right, can everyone on the panel hear my, see my screen?
Yep, that's great.
All right, well, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Glad you are here. I'm so excited to have such a large, large crowd with us today. As Dr. Duty mentioned, I am gonna share our roadmap for safely welcoming staff and students to the 2020, 2021 school year. My name's Maggie Furman. I'm the Assistant Superintendent. And again, I thank you for being here. I'm gonna share first our agenda for this presentation. Dr. Duty mentioned it is rather long, but we've got a lot of information and have received a lot of feedback that we want to honor and make sure we have covered as much as we can from that feedback, as well as go into details as much as possible, and that is pertinent at this time. I do also want to give a quick disclaimer that the information we're presenting is accurate as of today, but I think we've all seen that with the current situation, things can change very rapidly, and we may have to update or modify things as we go through the next few weeks and get ready to welcome our staff and students back. So I'm gonna go through our goals.
And just so everybody knows, I, I apologize, Maggie. I just want everyone online to know. I have to ask board members, if possible, to hold questions till the end so that we can be as efficient as possible. So if you need to jump in, if it's really crucial, please feel free, but if you can hold your questions, I think that would be great. And, and like Louis said, we can do the presentation, get the public comments, and then do board discussion after that. I think that's a great plan, so just wanted to make sure that we get that out there for everybody.
Great. We're gonna go through our goals, discuss considerations and guidance that we used, as well as barriers and government mandates, discuss our guiding principles, define a couple terms, and then we're gonna dig into our quadrants, which you'll see more about later, and then what those instructional plans look like based on the quadrant where we're in. We're gonna talk about survey results, and then we're gonna go through very specific department action steps and guidance from each of our departments in the system. Then we're gonna give our recommendation to the board for how we feel that we should start the 2020, 2021 school year, and then give some key dates and activities that we recommend take place. And then we've got a list of FAQs that I pulled from not just the survey, but also I have received lots and lots of emails through the opening 2020 email group, and I wanted to make sure that we've addressed as many of those questions and lingering questions that were out there. So the FAQs hopefully address those things from the emails that we received. So our goal as we embarked on this plan for how we're gonna welcome our students back was creating a top priority that would create a plan that minimizes the health and safety risks, while at the same time trying to balance how we can provide as many students as possible an in-person equitable, engaging, and meaningful learning experience. And that just really ties into our whole mission and vision as a school district. But our other goal was to make sure that we're able to provide clear health and safety requirements for in-person learning that are grounded in scientific literature and discussion, and literature and discussions with expert medical and public health advisors. And we had a really good team of community advisors that are parents in our community that work for public health organizations and hospitals and universities, and their information was just really, really valuable and helped us with this plan greatly. Considerations and guidance. We had these three key tenants as we worked on our plan. First is that we understand that virtual instruction, while it has improved, we definitely consider that it is no substitute for in-person instruction, particularly when it comes to quality for our students. We also wanted to make sure that we kept in mind that in-person instruction is not just about the academics. In-person instruction helps support our students' social emotional needs, including their mental and physical health, as well as mitigating impact of trauma that we have seen with our students and staff. We also know that continuing with virtual instruction can be disruptive for some families, especially those families that have limited resources. We did consult many different stakeholder groups and experts. First and foremost, we definitely relied on the Georgia Department K-12 Recovery Plan, guidance from the CDC, the Georgia Department of Public Health, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics Guidance, and many other resources, what other school districts are doing around the metro area, the nation, and international. We definitely were trying to gather as much information as possible. As I mentioned earlier, we did consult with a panel of parents and community members who work in various public health fields. We did consult with our Teacher Advisory Council. I met with them virtually back in June, went over our original plan, discussed their concerns on that, and then also all the stakeholder feedback through the surveys, as well as any of the emails that came through with suggestions and feedback as well. We know we don't operate in a vacuum. We have certain limitations and things that control what we do as a district, and we definitely needed to consider what those barriers and limitations included. One of them is the state funding cuts to education. Also knowing that we have limited space in our buildings and limited staff. We don't have as many staff as we might need for certain proposals of limiting our student to staff ratios. Also, we have mandated services for students with special needs, and that was a large consideration as we worked through our plan and how we can serve those students that need a different type of education than the general ed student may need. Also, any guidance or mandates from public health agencies, especially regarding any current spread or mitigation efforts. And then also, as we talk about operations and supply chain, just recently, we found that a lot of the hand sanitizer we ordered has been recalled. We've been having trouble as we place orders for different, different supplies that they're not coming in. As we order them, they're delayed, and then any feasibility also regarding transportation for how we can socially distance students on a bus. We also wanted to make sure that we focused on what our key priorities are in City Schools of Decatur. So we did want to assure that no matter what we did, we are ensuring the physical, intellectual, and emotional health and safety for our students and our families, and that's a top priority for us. Wanting to monitor and minimize the spread of COVID-19 in our school environment, definitely wanting to ensure that any students that fall into special populations, such as students with disabilities, are provided for and that they are given the due services that they need to access education in an equitable way. And then we really did want to continue to focus on our equity work, making sure that we are using culturally responsive teaching practices and allocating our resources in an equitable way. And then also always continuing to use, as we have for the past several years, is use our equity lens to provide high-quality, culturally responsive, and developmentally appropriate learning for our students academically, as well as social and emotional learning. I want to define a couple terms that we're going to dig into a little bit as we get to the next part of this presentation. And one, and Dr. Huddleston's gonna follow me after this section, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about the first two terms. But just so that you know, community spread is one of the terms we're going to use. And this is, and the analogy I gave earlier is you come home, you now have, let's say, a flu or the cold, you have no idea where you got it. That's community spread. If your mom had the cold and then you had the cold, you know where you got the cold. You can trace that pretty quickly. But community spread is you don't know that you encountered anyone with an illness, and now you are sick with this illness. And mitigation is how do you slow the spread of this illness? And then the other one we wanted to find is virtual learning. There were a lot of different terms, initially digital learning, and all kinds of ways to describe how we were engaging with our students in learning while they were at home. So we are going to define when we engage our students in learning at the home environment, that that is going to be virtual learning, and defining that it could be self-paced, it could be asynchronous, meaning the students are given an assignment, they do it on their own, they turn it in, or synchronous, which is this teacher and the student engaging in a live interaction, much like we are right now. It could be whole groups, small group, or even individual instruction. Could happen online, it could happen via the phone. There's lots of different avenues we have for engaging our students in virtual learning. And then the other one is hybrid learning. In a survey, I think we called it a modified schedule, but we definitely wanted to bring everyone together. And as we talk about, if we are looking at an option where some students are in our schools while others are at home, we're gonna define that as hybrid learning. And that means basically there's a combination between students coming into our classrooms for the traditional educational experience, while some students are engaging in learning at home via virtual learning. And that does mean some kids are on campus, some kids are remote. We may be staggering schedules and doing a variety of things to help mitigate spread of the virus while we have those students in our building. So now I am going to pass the presentation on to Dr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Good evening, Dr. Duty and school board members. Our school health team, under the guidance of District Leader Nurse Shonda Moore, developed an assessment tool to help us determine a way to reopen schools in light of current conditions with COVID-19. Next slide. This assessment tool is based on evaluating where we are with respect to community spread and mitigation. The first step is to determine the level of mitigation strategies ranging from effective to ineffective. Then we examine where we are on the continuum from low spread to high spread. Okay, and next. So this slide highlights the current number of COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, and deaths as of July 13th. We have over 8,000 cases in DeKalb County. Over 1,000 DeKalb residents have been hospitalized, and we've lost 180 people due to complications associated with COVID-19. Next. This graphic illustrates the number of confirmed cases in DeKalb County and the seven-day moving average. And as you can see, our local numbers have been trending up since February. Note where we were in March when we moved to virtual learning initially, and where we are now as we approach the opening of the 2021 school year. The Georgia Tech Biometrics Department developed a COVID-19 event risk assessment planning tool that has data that's very much similar to this, and it suggests that as of today in DeKalb County, there's a 65% risk that in a group of 25, one person would have COVID-19. Next slide. So next, I will share some of the areas of consideration when considering the current mitigation level. There are areas of mitigation that an individual can undertake, and there are aspects of mitigation that are under the offices of schools and the greater community. On the individual level, we're looking at things like frequent hand washing, maintaining social distance, and compliance levels with wearing mask or face coverings. Community strategies include access to broad-scale testing. For example, effective mitigation would include testing that's readily available with timely results. Another mitigation strategy is contact tracing. This refers to the ability of public health officials and other agencies to alert individuals of a potential exposure to COVID-19. Note that effective mitigation requires comprehensive and coordinated efforts across state and local agencies to ensure consistency and to improve the efficacy of strategies implemented. The CDC outlined three areas of considerations for schools with respect to determining readiness and planning for the opening of schools. They include policies and procedures, facilities and supplies, and professional learning. Their recommendation is that schools assess the degree to which policies and procedures for opening schools outline steps to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. It's important to assess the capacity and, and access to facilities and supplies that promote safety, and to assess the degree to which professional learning is adequate as it relates to health, education, and safety, such as educating staff members and, and families about when to stay home, and providing staff with information regarding the availability of flexible work and leave options. Next slide. It's important to note that mitigation and spread are connected, and so selection and implementation of mitigation actions should be guided by the extent of disease transmission. In this graphic, you see mitigation and spread divided into four quadrants that allow us to examine which opening school option would be most appropriate based on current levels. Based on this tool, effective mitigation and low spread would suggest a full return to in-person learning is appropriate. High spread with effective mitigation or ineffective mitigation with low spread might suggest that some type of hybrid learning option is appropriate. And high spread combined with ineffective mitigation strategies is indicative of a need for virtual learning, full virtual learning. Next. Full return to school would include normal return to school with additional health and safety precautions. So not business as usual, but same schedules, and everybody comes back with the addition of those safety protocols. Hybrid Option A would include approximately 50% of students in person at a time, with all others participating in virtual learning. And virtual learning is 100% of teachers and staff members participating in digital learning. However, it's important to note that there might be a need for administrators and operation personnel to be on site, and in that case, they would be expected to follow all safety protocols outlined for in-person learning. Hybrid Option B would include less than 50% of students in person at a time, and all others participating in virtual learning. So next, we are going to move into a part of this conversation where Esten is going to lead us in an analysis of stakeholder input.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Maggie, would you move to the next slide, please? Hopefully, as everyone in this meeting knows, late in June, we submitted, we sent a survey out to a couple of groups of constituents. First was to the parents and guardians of our students, and another very similar survey went out to our staff. The survey ran for a couple of weeks, from 23rd of June to just about a week ago. We had a very high initial response rate. Most people saw that survey and clicked through immediately, and that tended to taper off over time with a slight nudge when we sent a reminder in July. And that's worth just keeping in mind, because so much of this health situation has changed, even the, just the last week or so. So we'll look at the overall aggregate responses, but I'm also gonna show you some information about trends over time and folks' sentiment most recently. Two figures that didn't really quite fit on a standalone graph that we've given you below is, 15% of our parents whose children were regular bus riders this year weren't comfortable sending their kid on a bus if we couldn't maintain social distancing. And almost a quarter of our parents reported that even if our school buildings were open for face-to-face learning, they would still prefer a, a digital alternative. Maggie, the next slide, please. These are the response rates in aggregate, not controlling for time or changes in sentiments. You can see here a couple of things. One is, even the most popular options have not been tremendously popular. There's a reason that scale goes up to 100%. We're kind of capping out, capping out at the halfway mark. And you can even see some, some discrepancies or some differences between parents and guardian comfort levels and what our, and what our staff are reporting in terms of their comfort levels. And that's understandable. A parent's perspective about health and wellness for their child, and what a parent needs in order to also be employed, sometimes look a little bit different than a staff member thinking about their health and wellness in the workplace. So it's understandable that there's a gap here. But I think it's also interesting to look at change over time. So yeah, go ahead to the next one. Thank you, Maggie. So this is a, this is a sentiment over time. Parents and staff indicating their comfort or their extreme comforts with in-person learning. And you can see that for both our parents and guardians and for our staff members, that, that comfort level has declined as we have been paying attention to the news and become all too keenly aware of the health condition in our community and in our state and, and more broadly. And they are converging slightly, but they are both trending downward. The next one, please, Maggie? This is the same graph, comfort level and extreme comfort for online learning. And there has been a pretty consistent gap between staff and parent sentiment. However, as with the in-person option, we are definitely seeing an upward trend in comfort level. And, and that upward trend and the previous downward trend only go until the 6th of July. We did not run a systemic analysis on the follow-up emails that we have received, but I would tell you, just gauging my own sentiment, and I think those of us who have been receiving the emails since the opening 2020 email list would agree, we have seen both from staff and from parents writing in indicating that their comfort level with in-person has diminished. Their interest in, in online has, has increased as things have progressed or regressed when it comes to the community health crisis. The next one, please, Maggie? This is germane for, the, most germane for the three scenarios, the three quadrants where we have some component of students reporting physically to school, the mitigation strategies. These are weighted, colored gradients, anything that got 75% or more. This has a highlight there. And I think it's no particular surprise that both our parents and our teachers are really putting a heavy emphasis on, I think, the things that we all know to be in our, in our community's best interests of mitigating this. Face coverings, implementing social distancing, and being mindful about, about hand washing. It's not to diminish the importance of any of these others, but those have repeatedly risen to the top of best practices since this whole scenario began. And I think with that, Dr. Furman, it's back to you.
Thank you, Esten and Lilly. So what we wanted to do, based on the survey results and just good practice for what we know is important, is regardless of which quadrant we're in, we definitely wanted to set the precedence for these eight mitigation responses. And number one is face masks and requiring face masks or coverings for all students and staff to be worn while they are in the building. We would be as much as possible creating physical distancing to the greatest extent possible in all settings, building student groups or cohorts to minimize the number of staff or students who could potentially be exposed if there is an incident of someone being, testing positive for COVID, doing some kind of screening before people enter into the school buildings, and that is a detail we still are fleshing out all the intricacies on, but we have several options we're looking at. Definitely improving hand hygiene procedures with an increased frequency of hand washing, as well as hand sanitizing supplies being available throughout our buildings, providing an isolation space if someone gets at school, does become ill, we need to make sure we've got a place for them to be isolated, as well as a response plan if a staffer or student becomes ill at school, very specific steps for everyone to understand what happens, and then also restriction on visitors to our schools. We definitely know that we need to limit that to the very essentials. And important to note here is that these mitigation strategies are intended to be used in combination to establish a culture of health and safety at our schools. When all of these strategies are used in combination, we believe that we can substantially reduce the risk of transmission in our schools. So it's not one or the other is more or less important. It's all of these things are equally important to create a safe environment in our schools. So the next part of the presentation is each department has gone through the different quadrants and created action steps and guidance for how we will respond in the different quadrants. And we're gonna start off with Dr. Huddleston again to talk through the equity and student supports.
Okay, so I'll talk a little bit about racial equity first, and it is clear that we want to continue the momentum we have started with our racial equity work and our anti-racist education. So I've outlined three areas that we are able to continue this work in quadrants one through four. So first, to talk a little bit about professional learning, we are able to provide courageous conversation about race training for staff members, either virtually or in person if indicated. We are looking at ways to move forward with culturally responsive teaching. Some of that training has been rescheduled for November, so we'll be watching to see whether or not travel is possible, but if not, we have options for virtual access to that as well. Restorative practices. We'll continue the next phase in restorative practices training. We've already had administrators go through training and instructional coaches. The next step is to pull in more of our teaching staff, so that is available from the International Institute of Restorative Practices in an online format. We're also geared up to continue both school and We're also geared up to continue both school and district level equity teams, and that can be done virtually or in person. So next, I'll talk about some of the interventions and supports that we have started or will be initiating this school year. Many of you are familiar with Students Organized for Anti-Racism, and we will be able to continue that virtually or in person. This year's budget included funds for a mentorship group for students from the African diaspora. And it is our goal to continue that in connection with some of our community partners. And I've been working with Dr. Banks to look at ways we can do that both virtually and in person. The same is true of our staff racial healing and racial affinity groups and the student sessions that I talked about during our last board meeting that we're planning for grade six through 12 on race, racism, and culture. Dr. Banks and I have been meeting with Dr. Watson to develop those, and so we are making good progress on getting our thoughts and ideas together with regard to what each of those sessions will look like. And once we have our final decision, we'll be able to finalize the direction of that work. We're also going to be able to continue partnering with curriculum and instruction to look at our curriculum through an equity lens, K-12. And so Dr. Banks has been involved in some of the work, providing some training for the CNI team, working very hard on looking at what our options will look like for opening school with regard to curriculum. Next, I just wanted to mention that we are very much involved in policy and procedures and continuing to do that online or in person. And so most recently, we are giving input on the code conduct and restorative practices, looking at certain elements of that through a racial equity lens. We have a unique opportunity, given that takes and leaks evaluations will be paused for this year, to be able to reimagine what that will look like and really be able to tie in evaluation to our, our three pillars of our district improvement plan and to be able to highlight our work around equity and be able to have that well-integrated into evaluation. We are also partnering with staff support to look at employee training and support that new staff members will have in terms of joining our district. Next slide. Thank you. So now I'll talk a little bit about things that are being put in place for school health services. So these are things that we would be looking at for quadrants one through four because regardless of which quadrant we land on at the end of this conversation, there will be some individuals who will be on site. As I mentioned before, we would be looking at some administrators and we would be looking at other operations personnel who would be on site. So it is important to know that Nurse Moore and her team will be monitoring the data related to the current state of mitigation and community spread so that we have accurate information for decision-making purposes. Our nurses and school health team will distribute and oversee screening procedures. They'll be the main people involved in making sure that our PL is comprehensive and covers all of the things that staff members need to know about PPE use and social distancing, screening, et cetera. And those things can be done virtually. This will be the team that's distributing our district-wide procedures regarding sick guidelines, and these are going to be very clear so that people understand. For example, if you have a fever of 100.0 and that's the cutoff, then, then you would not be allowed to proceed in the building. So we want to make sure that those are outlined and given to parents well before the first day of entering any of the school sites. The school health team will collaborate with school-based administration around notification. They will be engaged in contact tracing in collaboration with the health authorities, local health authorities. And they will play an integral role in helping us to solidify our isolation and quarantine procedures and providing input on closures related to COVID-19. And they will also be continuing the work that they're doing with the school health clinics and offices utilizing standard and transmission-based precautions. Next slide, please. So here is a slide that links us to information about screening for responding to COVID-19 in K-12 schools. This is a decision-making tree. And this and other tools will be helpful in us really making final decisions with regard to closure in the event of exposure to COVID-19. So this is just one tool that we wanted to share with you. So now I'll talk a little bit about social emotional learning and mental health. You notice that when Dr. Furman talked a little bit about our goals and some of the key actions that we wanted to make sure were incorporated regardless of the way we opened school, at the forefront, we have social emotional learning, we have mental health. And we, I have worked with members of Equity and Student Support to look at ways we can highlight SEL and highlight mental health and well-being in our approach to opening schools. So the first one is we're looking at being able to offer check-ins for students, and these may be individual or group check-ins from Equity and Student Support staff members focused on engagement, making sure that however we re-enter, that we are making sure that students are engaged. If there's a virtual component, making sure that students are logging in, that they are getting what they need. And also having those check-ins as an opportunity to take a look at mental health and well-being as well as student safety. We know that our mental health providers in school in general are typically involved with reporting things regarding safety for our students, and so we want to be able to have that touch point and that connection to, to see how our students are doing and provide them with support. The next bullet outlines a little bit of information about our behavioral engagement strategies. So as you know, we have a new staff member in Equity and Student Support, and that's Dr. Rhonda Poe, and she is our behavior interventionist. And she will be working on making sure teachers are aware of strategies that we can use to enhance engagement, whether we are virtual or in person, as well as, in the instance of students being back in the classroom, for those who have had some behavior challenges, we want to make sure that we are preventing and de-escalating in ways that are conducive and aligned to our health protocols. So she'll be heading that work. I talked a little bit at our last meeting about the C-Learning curriculum, and that is a social, emotional, and ethical curriculum, K-12, that has been developed at every university. We are moving forward with that. We've had one training session for the mental health professionals who will be pushing this out to our schools. We'll have another one this week and one more to make sure that at opening school, we're ready to go with that. And we're able to start off with our focus on social emotional health. One of the things that we have proposed is to have a Wellness Wednesday. So regardless of whether we are doing this virtually or we're doing this in person, we want to be able to have a focus time that all students are receiving either the social emotional curriculum or some sort of mental health and well-being check-in. So the Decatur Student Center, which you know is a K-12 initiative, even though it's located there at the high school and will be having a site at Renfro, starting to build that, we will be able to offer counseling groups through that center, virtually or in person. And we also have several community partners who have already been up and running with telemental health, and they would be able to provide services for students and to continue that work, that mental health and well-being work. So moving on to section 504 in School Psychology. Here we've outlined some things that would be in place for quadrants one, two, or four, so full, in-person, or either of the virtual options. So there, in terms of our students who are currently eligible, 504 plans will be implemented as the students are participating in onsite education, and 504 plans would be reviewed as needed. I want to highlight that if there are things in the plan that are not consistent with our safety protocols, such as use of proximity, you know, and things about the arrangement of the classroom, it would be important for us then to have alternative accommodations and to be able to identify those and propose them to the 504 team. Psychological evaluations would be conducted in-person using enhanced safety protocols. So that would be offered. And psychologists would also be able to provide academic and behavioral consultation, social emotional support, and to participate in the same range of multidisciplinary teams in which they have been traditionally involved. So for quadrant three, if we are looking at full virtual, 504 teams have already reviewed plans, reviewed plans when we moved to virtual in March. And so we already have a baseline of what students might need in the virtual setting. Of course, as needed, we would be able to review those if there are some other concerns or issues or referral concerns that come up. And 504 evaluations would be conducted with enhanced safety protocols. The same is true for psychological evaluations. We would be able to keep those moving forward. However, it's important to note that we would be able to use some online assessment tools. And there are a range of tools that are available, and we would select the ones that are appropriate for the student and for the situation in order to minimize physical interactions. Note that under certain circumstances, since this is a one-to-one testing situation, select components of the evaluations may be conducted in person using PPE and all of our safety protocols unless it's contraindicated by the medical needs of the student. And we will also be able to continue those virtual services, so participation in meetings, academic and behavioral consultation, and social emotional support. And now we will turn it over to...
Actually, Dr. Duddy had something he wanted to share.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll go to Kristi.
Hey, everybody. Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate you letting me interrupt just real quickly here. I'm having a little trouble focusing, and I think other people might be as well, based on what happened right at the start of our, when we tried starting this meeting. And so I just want to address it real quick so we can process that a little bit and maybe focus a little bit easier, just share. When we stopped the other meeting, I shared that there had been a vulgar message posted, and I hadn't actually seen what the message was. I had just heard that it was a vulgar message, and that's when we jumped in and changed it. I have since been told what it said, and it is not just vulgar, it's vile and racist and hurtful, and it's just really disgusting that anybody would ever think that it's okay to say such a thing. So I apologize that we had a venue that allowed that to happen, and I'm, I'm just really disgusted by it, and I just wanted to give an opportunity if any of our board members wanted to share any thoughts on that. I just, it was difficult for me to keep paying attention once I learned what that message actually said, and I thought it might be helpful to, to just give an opportunity to share quickly before we move on with the rest of the presentation.
I, I couldn't focus. Dr. Banks, you work so hard and everything that you do is so good. It was a good time to interrupt with your equity work, and I hope everyone paid attention to many of the things that the board is doing. And Esten, if we can screenshot the name of the individual, so, you know, that did it, know the sort of stuff. Thank you for addressing it, Dr. Duddy and the rest of the members of the board. I think, you know, there are 500 people here for a reason to hear what we have to say, and we can get to that, but good Lord.
Yeah, I echo your sentiments, Dr. Duddy. Thank you for addressing it, and I'm, yeah, equally disgusted and just disappointed that it comes up. You know, I've heard of this happening on Zoom, so we don't know anything about the person who did it, whether they're from our community or not, but just the fact that it happens is so disappointing. So thank you for acknowledging it and, and yes, allowing us to also voice our disgust.
Well, this is about as a community collectively, this is like the fourth time we've experienced the N-word collectively. And between racist videos to this comment in our chat, I don't, we don't know if this was someone from our community or not, but just last week, somebody removes black from the Black Lives Matter message on the Renfro marquee. And so, you know, black folks deal with these types of, unfortunately, these types of heartbreaking racist actions regularly. And so for me, I have to almost become a little numb to it or else it could become overwhelming. But what I think is really important is if our neighbors, our coworkers, our friends in the community let folks know that this is not, no longer going to be tolerated here in the city of Decatur, that this is a safe space for everyone. So that's it.
I think maybe the longer I live, I will get to the point where I can become numb to it. I pray for that day because I haven't found that day yet. And as much as I don't want to give energy to racist and ignorant comments, I'm also a human being, and, and I am one of those human beings that that message was directed towards. And so, close to impossible not to take it personally and just brush it off. So thank you, Dr. Duddy, for interrupting the meeting, as I too was finding it very hard to concentrate on this other pandemic, the two pandemics that we're essentially talking about right now, with the other pandemic of racism sneaking in to take over. So I appreciate you stopping the meeting so we could just address it. And to all of the other community members and families and staff who are on this meeting right now who were hurt or offended by what happened, I feel your pain as well. And I hope we all can just take a moment to acknowledge it and then just kind of breathe and try to get through to this other huge and pressing and important pandemic that we have to deal with as well.
I can't add much to that, and all I can say is it's sickening to me. I didn't see it, and so I wasn't affected in the same way because I wasn't aware of what was happening. I'm so sorry that others did see it. I'm so sorry that you have to deal with this kind of thing, and I can't even begin to imagine what it would be like to have to experience that day in and day out. So, yeah, all I can say is that we are a place where we don't tolerate that. We don't tolerate that. We're not going to tolerate that. And so we should, I appreciate David, you're stopping, needing to address it. And so hopefully we can now move on.
Thanks, everybody. Well said, and to your point, Jane, I truly feel there's an army of white allies being built in Decatur to tackle this because this is not a problem for one group of people to tackle, it's a problem for all of us to tackle. And so I appreciate you sharing all of your thoughts and allowing me to interrupt what we were doing a little bit. I just felt it was really important. So thank you so much, and, and we'll do our best to carry on, like Tasha said, with talking about another pandemic in the midst of experiencing the racist pandemic. So I think we're going to move on with curriculum and instruction. So Kristi, I think you're jumping in, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. Our, I think our ultimate goal is to create a safe space for everyone, so I hope that we can work together so that the students of color and the people of color in this community do have a safe space and don't have to experience such filth like that every day. I'm sorry that that happened. In a typical year, you know, the beginning of school requires an enormous amount of work and intentional planning. This year, with us missing some of the data that we usually have to, from the end of the year to support our students and not coupling that with not knowing the impact of the building closures from the spring on the academic and emotional health of our students, we know that this year, regardless of how we come back, we know that we must be more intentional and consistent than ever before. So we are planning to focus on the most critical standards for our students. We are identifying assessments that we can use regardless of the environment so that we can help mitigate any loss of instruction for our students. And we want to, in the forefront, the focus is on the connectedness, the safety, the success, and the comfort of our students. We also know that our students' background and home life is even more influential right now to their success with the current experience. So we want that to be on the forefront as well. We also can't ignore the experiences like we just had that are, some of our students are experiencing. And so we want that to be addressed as well. So we want to be sure that our teachers have the training that they need to acknowledge, explore, and celebrate differences, which is, that will be an important part of our planning. Maggie, could you go to the next slide, please? So we'll be identifying assessments that we need to use to support our students. We'll be supporting students with students that will be changing buildings. We want to be sure that those students know what to expect, even if they're not in the building, that they know who they can depend on and rely on in their new setting. We want to be sure that we are reviewing from spring whatever critical standards to be sure that the students mastered those. We want to make sure that all of our students have the necessary technology and materials that they need to be successful and ensure that all schools as a district, we're working on those collective priorities. Next slide, Maggie. Thank you. So if we are specifically in the thinking about the virtual environment, we know that we need to provide staff with training on the guiding principles, resources, and expectations for best practices in the virtual learning environment. We know that we need to be sure that our staff are technically proficient and comfortable with instruction that is engaging, student-centered, and interactive in the virtual environment. We need to be sure that we have fail safes for students that are disengaged and we are supporting those students as needed if they are not engaging in the virtual environment. We know that we need to provide families with structures and routines to support learning at home and we know that we have to keep that human connection on the forefront. We have to provide students with a sense of belonging and help them feel seen in that environment. We need to provide frequent checks and a space for students to talk about their emotional health. So what we have been doing to prepare for that this summer is I have a team that we call the Virtual Vanguard. They are an amazing team of teachers who have done a massive amount of work and they represent a cross-section of grade levels, content areas. They have deeply analyzed the content of the survey data from parents, staff, and students. They have analyzed the resources around best practices. We have read article after article after article and researched the best practice and we've, we've looked for what are the cross-sections between what our parents, staff, and students are saying and what research says. So based on that, we have created some must-dos, some non-negotiables that we need to see from all teachers, all classrooms across the district. We've also created specific expectations for the various grade bands and we have an umbrella of social emotional learning guidelines that would, would go across all settings. Where we are right now is the team is collecting feedback from principals, instructional coaches, and a select group of teachers on what, getting some feedback on the guidelines so we can finalize those. And then we will be looking at, you know, what specific resources we may need and what professional development for teachers and training. Now, if we are in the virtual environment, that there will be, we have identified feedback is important, obviously. Assessments are going to be important, so we will be training teachers on using the reply component so that feedback is given in a timely manner, is specific, it's positive, and it is based on improvement and personal to the student. We also will have specific requirements. Next slide, please, Maggie. On attendance, grading, we've started identifying what that would look like. We know in the fall that based on state recommendation, students were held harmless. Should we go to the virtual environment this year, there will be accountability as far as attendance and grading. Students will be required to complete assessments and assignments and there will be grading standards very similar to their, what there would be in any of the other, either the hybrid or the face-to-face model. So of course, in any of the quadrants, whether it be hybrid, face-to-face, or virtual, we will be supporting our, all of our students. Students in the MTS does processing and receiving EIP or REP services or gifted services will be supported. The students will be supported, obviously, face-to-face, hybrid, or virtual. The intervention plans will be implemented. One difference again from the spring would be that in the spring, we had the plans written for students and we implemented them as, as possible in the virtual environment. And in this case, if we are virtual, the plans will be reviewed and implement, interventions will be designed specifically for the students in that environment. I think we heard of Frances. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I will be presenting on state and federal programs, which encompasses Title I, ESOL, and special education. So for quadrant one, which is when school is in full traditional session, then of course, we'll start with Title I. Teachers will be implementing their services as they would traditionally. In a quadrant two types of situation, the teachers would be implementing their services as they would in person. And then if we had to do some kind of hybrid with virtual, then they would work with their general education peers and colleagues to make sure that they are using the virtual environment that has been provided by the district to, to provide services to the students. Maggie, oh, thank you. In quadrant three, which is full virtual, then we will, as Kristi said, we will be providing services in a full virtual format. This is very similar to what we did in the spring with Title I. And so our teachers would be doing that as well. And then with the hybrid model, they would be able to implement the pull-out or push-in services and the intervention plans, again, to the population of students that is able to come to the school or virtually. ESOL will follow pretty much the same format as what I just described for Title, so we don't have to necessarily go into, I know we're watching our time. But for ESOL qualifications and screenings, we will make sure that the home language survey, which is required by, by the state, is being done during the registration process and so that we can make sure that we're in compliance with that, but we're following up with families as we need to and making sure that we're screening them using the appropriate remote screeners, which is the WIDA. For Title I student qualifications, we will work our wonderful and amazing Title and Federal Program's Coordinator, Willie Washington, will be supporting our teachers as we are evaluating the data that we have to evaluate to make sure the students are qualified per the regulations. Special education. So for quadrant one, with the full return to school, we would be implementing IEPs as they are written in a typical format. That is our offer of faith to our students and we know that nothing replaces face-to-face instruction. However, we also know that no IDEA, well, only one IDEA requirement is waived at this time and that is for our very, very young learners transitioning from babies can't wait over to school-age services. So we will make sure that we are providing services to our students with IEPs. We do understand, though, that the IEPs will not be able to be implemented in the very same fashion in a hybrid or virtual format. In the spring, what we did is we asked teachers to create service logs and provide as much services as they could. This time around, we will actually be going to more formal learning contingency plans or virtual plans in which certain pieces of the IEP will be moved over into those plans. And of course, we will have these meetings with families so that they have input into what services can really be moved over into a virtual environment or a hybrid environment. We want to make sure that the students are receiving accommodations, that the families know which goals will be worked on, what is appropriate for that environment. There may be some goals and some accommodations that are not appropriate in the virtual setting. And so we want to discuss those as well. If, I'm sorry, go back one more time. Yes, if we are able to and when we are able to bring any population of students back into the buildings for a face-to-face instruction, whether it be the 50% of students or the less than 50% of students, we will be prioritizing our students that are in our small group, regional, or program classes. These are our students that are more in the cognitively impaired disability categories. And we, we know that these students have the hardest time accessing virtual instruction. And so we want to make sure that, that we prioritize these students as well as our three- and four-year-olds that are served under IDEA. We want to make sure that our speech therapists and staff that are working with students, perhaps doing evaluations like speech therapists can do, they are also going to be provided with either face shields or masks with the clear mouth opening so that they can conduct those services and those evaluations when we get to this type of situation. And then in a quadrant three situation, which is the full virtual learning, then we are again committed to looking at these IEPs and moving everything that, that is relevant to be moved and can be moved into this learning contingency plan. We will make sure that we are looking at everything from co-teaching to small group and individual services and consultation services to make sure that we are providing as much as we can to the students. I want to make a quick note that we will follow the psychological evaluations procedure that Dr. Huddleston presented on earlier and we will, we will be holding IEP meetings, eligibility meetings, all of those types of meetings virtually. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that we will also be following the guidance from curriculum and instruction, student supports, and any health and safety protocols that are set by the various departments.
Hey there, everyone. This is Eston. I'll talk a little bit about what Information Services has queued up. Members of the board will know that I think every, every monthly meeting, I've sung the praises of my amazing staff. They did tremendous work in March and April to get equipment out to kids. We had about 1,500 Chromebooks that went out to students of all grade levels. We had a few dozen families and students serviced with, with hotspots. And so the question kind of lingering over the summer was when, if ever, will we ask for this equipment back? And we've been sitting on our hands, not asking for it back, in anticipation of maybe not coming back to school. But also recognizing that even if we were, there is a need in the community to provide access for our families. And as Dr. Duddy has, has said several times, we don't want to pass up taking advantage of a crisis. And so let's talk about, I'll talk a bit about hotspots and I'll talk a bit about, about devices. The hotspots that are in circulation now, we're not asking back. And we're going to work to remove any uncertainty that our families have about that and proactively notify families that have a hotspot, that they're welcome to hold on to them. If a family is in a position to subscribe to home, home broadband, then we would certainly welcome the equipment back. But our priority is making sure that we're offering a helping hand and not applying any pressure for folks to give up a resource that we've seen be helpful to, to our families. We've also received, I just put in our office at the Wilson Center earlier today, another shipment of hotspots in anticipation of any future demand. Back in, back in March, the supply chain for hotspots was incredibly tight, but we've seen, I don't want to say glut, but we've seen that marketplace fill back up. There's a, there's a lot to thank the Georgia Department of Education IT on to apply some pressure to local telecoms to work around data plans and remove data caps and put additional hotspots in a good pricing place so that school districts around the state can afford them and subscribe to those service, services on behalf of our, of our students. In terms of Chromebooks, like I said, we have 1,500 out in circulation. Depending on the quadrant that we land in for opening school, our desire is very much to keep those devices in our families' hands unless they have purchased their own equipment and there's no longer a need. We did have families who came up to us when they were picking up locker materials and returning uniforms and whatnot, asked to return Chromebooks. And as much as possible, our staff encouraged them to hold on to them over the summer. The marketplace for Chromebooks has constricted quite a bit. We are working with one of our main vendors to bring a shipment in probably later next month. But in, in the here and now, we have a pretty healthy supply that is still within, within our walls. If we open in some kind of hybrid model, we will maybe need to tighten our belts, but our priority is to make sure that our families have the devices and the connectivity they need at home to engage safely with their learning. One of the things that we, in hindsight, I think could have done better on in, in March, was reaching out directly to our partners. Corey Bivins, who I think is, I saw his name in the room, we've been emailing a bit during this meeting, alerted me a while ago that the, the community center at the DHA property next to Wilson Center has undergone renovation. And that has been a nexus for some of our families to get online. And so I'm going to continue to work with, with Corey to remove whatever barriers we can to ensuring that equipment, that either a device or a hotspot gets into our family members, our, our family's hands. Maggie, so if we have a, thinking only specifically about any quadrant that has us doing partially or totally online, we will turn back on a couple of channels for families to solicit a device. We would couple that with, for example, any distribution of other school supplies. If we are looking at any kind of virtual learning, we'll be crafting a springboard site, so to speak, for families that has not only pedagogy information for, for students and parents, but also the technology support needs such as how to put in an initial request. Any scenario too that requires our workforce to work remotely, we're going to reemphasize the importance of exercising good stewardship over our kids' privacy and information and also information security. We have unfortunately, but not surprisingly, seen during this health crisis, a pretty significant uptick in malicious actors trying to steal information. It's, and it's not just a Decatur thing or a Georgia thing, it is all over the place. But we have an obligation to, to our kids and our families and our staff to make sure that we're doing everything absolutely possible to maintain security of our data systems and protecting our kids' privacy. And so refreshers on that and reminders on that and training on that will certainly be a part of, of any opening model.
Thank you, Eston. Good evening, board members. Dr. Duddy, for our operations department, we will have the following considerations for our facility buildings. In the quadrant one, two, and four, staff will be required to wear face coverings at all times unless he or she is alone in personal office space. A student's face covering will be required at all times. We will be limiting between, mixing between groups in halls by staggering class schedules. We increase the number. We increase the number of students in hallways at one time, no large gatherings will be permitted. We will continue monitoring the reduction in confirmed cases of COVID-19 as part of the state mitigation and observance of community spread. Social distance, six feet in classroom to the greatest degree. Desk table distance of six feet between students. Classroom will have adequate cleaning, disinfection and frequently touched surfaces. This is part of the, the frequently cleaning. The HBAC units will be have, will have a cold plasma purification system installed. And we will make adjustments to, to make more fresh air intake inside our buildings. Hand sanitizers and personal protection equipment will be available. We are working in the physical barriers such as SNIES guards, shields. All these things will be installed. The school signage will be placed through our H school. Students will be clustered to minimize, what was that, minimize potential spread. Next, for the quadrant one, two and four, we will have additional requirements for training of custodians and staff. We will monitor the reduction requirements of treatment and disinfection of classrooms in schools. We will monitor the risk and concerns of students, teachers wearing face coverings during the whole school day. Directional hallways and space markers, place of floors, cleaning of any communal equipment between students such as, as a gym classes. Nutrition for the quadrants one, two and four, the nutrition staff will be wearing face coverings and will follow federal and state, state guidelines. Boxes and grab and go meals will be provided. The cafeteria will set up grab and go stations. Students will eat meals in classrooms. Touch-free payments options will be available to avoid touching the keypad for payments. And the quadrant three, and for nutrition department, meals will be served from one or more CSD locations. Next. For transportation department, the quadrants one, two and four, face covering will be required to ride the bus. Hand sanitizer will be provided, buses will be disinfected between routes. Social distance while riding the bus is challenging and is not feasible. Buses will be open windows in effort to increase airflow. Outdoor spaces in the quadrant one, two and four, for the outdoor activities, outdoor activity will be permitted. Teachers and students will remain together throughout the day. Enforcing no sharing of class equipment, objects and toys. The playground and outside activities should be on rotating schedule. Next.
Thank you, Sergio. Ms. Walker is going to share some more particulars, but I did want to take a moment before we dig into more staff support to address our teachers and make sure that our teachers know that we are very much lifting up them as a high priority. We recognize that teachers are the cornerstone of preparing how this school year is going to go. And we really depend on them for making this successful. Also, we know that our staff has significant concerns with the challenges provided by remote learning that it takes a toll on teachers and their families. They've got to balance providing instruction for their students with caring for their own children as well as help manage their own children access, accessing their virtual learning if they're at home. We also know that providing in-person instruction is extremely concerning for many of our staff. They're worried about their personal health and the health of their family. We do want to note also that planning the 2021 school year, it hasn't been easy. It has been very difficult. But we have to acknowledge that the planning is not nearly as difficult or important as an effective implementation of this plan by our staff. Know that our teachers are going to need flexibility and social emotional support as well as our students. And we also want our teachers to know that we know we probably will have either staff or students that test positive that have been in our buildings when we come, welcome our students or staff back into the buildings. But we do have very clear protocols to follow from the local and public health department. So we did want to just take a minute and recognize our teachers and other instructional staff as well as our school-based leaders for all the work that they are going to do once we pass the baton from the planning phase to the implementation phase.
Thank you, Maggie. We definitely wanted to emphasize that our staff and our teachers are definitely at the forefront of every decision. So right now, we will look at a little bit of what the staff support will continue to, and how we will continue to support our staff in any quadrant that we do land. Right here, just like Dr. Furman said, that we do know that we will have COVID-19 cases within our district. So we have a what to do if in information page. It outlines exposure protocols, return to work requirements, requesting leave and action plans. We also have our employee rights poster that is a clearly outlines the different leave, under the emergency leave act that we do have. And it clearly defines your rights as an employee and this has been distributed to all of our employees. Usually it would be posted in all of our buildings, but since we are not physically in the buildings, that's how we are in compliance is making sure all of our employees have that via email. We will continue to manage all of our leave requests that comes to our department. Right now, we have a few employees that have returned to work and of course, we have had to manage some leave cases currently. But right now, whenever, whatever quadrant that we in, that we are in, we will make sure that we will manage those accordingly and, and the accommodation that is requested. We will continue to train the staff and substitutes according to the virtual and hybrid instructions needs that is outlined in each department that is given to us. And also we will continue our virtual hiring processes that were put in place during the spring closures. And this is including conducting virtual interviews for all positions if possible. We will have gearing up for our new year. We will have our virtual new hire orientations for both certified and classified staff. And we also encourage all of our staff for any staff meetings or any meetings that we will have as far as within the buildings that you limit that to virtual, to a virtual format. The rest of the bullet points is we will operate under each quadrant. We will continue to support our new hires within electronic contracts and new hire paperwork, which is, which we implemented at the beginning of this hiring season via our frontline central system. We will sustain communication between our new hires, principals and hiring managers throughout this whole hiring process and season. We will collaborate with our principals and department leaders to support employees, employees preparedness and returning to work and transitioning whichever quadrant we do land. We will also source additional substitutes to ensure classroom coverage, whether we, we are in a virtual setting or in person. We will also work with our Georgia PSC concerning certification flexibilities due to COVID-19. And we also encourage the use of our employee assistance program for mental health and emotional support for all of our staff.
Thank you, Adina. Good evening, everyone. Our professional learning plan this year is to prioritize specific needs of the district for starting a successful year with high-quality instruction through supportive structures and for sharing with a common vision, messaging, guidelines and expectation using all available data and resources effectively. Results of the district surveys, the curriculum and instruction task force, community panels, teacher advisory councils, as well as guidance documents from health agencies, federal and state resources and so on, will be used to help create the plans that we put in place. We are in the process of preparing, preparing virtual formats for pre-planning events and routine trainings for instructional and operational staff to start the year. This will include pandemic-specific training, designing virtual instructions, department updates and our normal compliance and mandatory professional development. We want to be mindful to honor the expertise, expertise of our teacher leaders. Our administrators will be working together to create and provide student-centered professional learning in a wide range of formats. Our three core pillars of instruction and district priorities, including continuing our work with equity, social emotion learning, cultural responsive teaching practices as well as restorative practices. We also want to make sure that we, including the principles from our instructional frameworks, EL and IB, and our professional development will be personalized and differentiated to address the needs of our new hires, our returning staff and a model of innovative cross-training for support staff, including paraprofessionals, substitute teachers and pre-service educators. And this is basically what we're talking about developing cohorts or cohorting and that we're just being able to support smaller group of, smaller groups of students. Whenever possible, professional learning will emphasize the modeling of lesson design components that we want to see in instruction for our students. We also want to monitor the impact of professional learning and to support successful implementation of our instructional practices throughout the school year with coaching, job embedded learning structures such as PLCs and study groups with collaborative planning, staff crew meetings and possibly CSD university. We also plan to launch the new frontline professional learning platform and that would also help us to document and to monitor the success of our professional learning activities for this year. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Heidi Watley, the Director of Research and Analytics. And for, if we open just business as usual, we don't need to make any adjustments. We already had a assessment plan. But for quadrants two through four with the hybrid and the virtual learning, we will need to train staff to Procter Online Map, which is measures about academic progress. That company has created a way to reliably get student data remotely, which is, we're very happy about that. To work with curriculum and instruction to identify assessment tools to use for progress monitoring that are now available online. Many of the companies that we contract with to use products are now creating ways to make them remote. So we need to spend some time vetting them and seeing what's reliable and what might work for our students in those settings. And every day we're getting new emails of things that are becoming available. So it's, it's not like they have been there. Working with student support to define attendance requirements for virtual learning, DOE is going to come out this week with some guidance and so figuring out how to do that. Adjusting our assessment calendar to respond to the federal waiver for testing. It's not yet approved, but if it does get approved. And then looking at the online tools, what can, what can be administered online, adjusting those testing windows to give us enough time to assess students. Updating our research, search request process so that folks wanting to do research with us for those quadrants two through four, obviously we will not be able to do any in-person work. And most importantly, right now, working to use our fall data to compare it and analyze learning loss for our students as they return to school. And that one would be for all of the quadrants. We need to figure out where our students are at. Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us, we are just about to wrap up our presentation. And based on all this information that we've shared, we have to decide where do we land and what quadrant resources are we going to put into action? And just as we look at the data and get the input from where we are with current mitigation and the spread of the virus, we are definitely seeing high spread of the virus. And we are seeing that we are in the ineffective range, which places CSD in quadrant number three, which would tell us that we should be looking at how to operate as a school system in this quadrant three, which leads us to recommend a full virtual learning return to the school year. So the recommendation to the board is that we start our 2020, 2020 school year, 21 school year in the full virtual setting with an enhanced virtual learning program. We would provide a rich, rigorous learning experience that requires our teachers to be innovative as well as significant parent support. Engaging our students through online lessons supported by live instruction, tutoring and personal mentorships. Also lifting social emotional learning and the human connection to provide this foundation and giving teachers suggested routines and structures as well as lessons in how they should provide feedback. We also are recommending that we would push the start date back for our students to August 17th. Teachers don't come off contract until July 28th. And to, in order to make sure that we can start this full virtual learning in an effective way, we need to provide our teachers with some planning time, get them ready to launch this. And then what we will do as we move forward is then at fall break, we would change that to be a full instructional week during the 21st through the 25th and then reevaluate ongoing where we are on these quadrants so that we can give parents hopefully a week. But notice also being ready to say if overnight there is a call from governing bodies that we have to go to a more restrictive, we have to be ready to change that, but hoping to give people as much notice as possible. So some key dates for consideration. And as we look forward at planning would be extending our pre-planning from July 28th through August 7th. Interaction here would be mostly virtual. Some activities may be limited gatherings and small groups. Key activities during this time would be starting our connections with families, building teams, teacher planning, providing significant staff development as well as health and safety training for our staff. The next phase would be building communities with our families. This also would be mostly virtual, but some in-person opportunities with small groups and limited contact, particularly with picking up supplies and materials focusing during this would be on wellness and preparation. Having an opportunity to do some assessments with our students, engaging in social emotional learning support, health and wellbeing checks, distributing student supplies and making sure we have all contact information correct. And that would lead us to a start of school on August 17th, which would be a virtual learning for all students. We want to set an end date for that, just tentatively as September 25th, which gets us through the end of break. Continuing to monitor where we are with mitigation and spread of the virus. And hopefully by no later than September 18th, be able to make a decision on which quadrant we're ready to move into at that time. And then if we, starting this virtual learning for the first six weeks, we would definitely be establishing clear learning expectations, building, continuing to build that community with our staff and students and definitely giving assessment and feedback on learning to our students. So that is the recommendation from the cabinet and the superintendent for our board to consider. And then there are some FAQs here. As I went through all the emails and contacts and survey feedback, these cover some of the things that weren't necessarily included in our plan. But the face coverings was a huge question and we would want to say, yes, if we have people in our buildings, we would require them to wear face masks. Had several questions about athletics and extracurricular activities. We're going to continue to follow the guidance from the Georgia High School Sports Association with how we manage that. We are in conversations with lots of the neighboring districts on how they're managing those. Also, there were lots of questions, what happens if someone tests positive? What do we do? What if there's a presumptive positive case? And we are now have much more clear guidelines for how to respond for that. And we will be offering virtual meet and greets. And if there's more information needed, we've got the opening 2020 page. And we are going to be scheduling some virtual town hall meetings to share additional information, particularly as we decide which quadrant we move into next. What do those next steps look like? How are we preparing? We've also had several questions about our early learning centers at College Heights and Frazier. We are going to continue keeping those open for zero to three tuition services. Those two programs have much different guidelines than our K, pre-K actually 12 requirement. So we are going to continue keeping those facilities open. Pre-K in particular does follow some of the, will follow the K-12 plan. First day of school for students will be August 17th. First G A of school for students will be August 17 as well, if this plan is approved. Lots of questions about the hybrid schedule, what would that look like? Parents gave lots of great suggestions. We initially threw out the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, but we've got lots of feedback, and I think we're going to continue to refine what that process would look like to ensure that it is the most beneficial for the most people. Lots of questions about bathrooms. Once we bring kids back into the building, how do we keep those clean and ensure physical distancing? We are going to make sure that there's a strict cleaning rotation for those and that educating our students on how to make sure they social distance in a restroom. Questions about lockers came up a lot. We, at this point, if we are in a hybrid model, we would not use lockers. Still to be determined for quadrant one with the full learning returns. Also, we are continuing to offer a full virtual option if we are in quadrants one, two, or four for parents. Obviously, we don't need a full virtual option if the whole district is in virtual. But parents were asking about students being able to continue to engage in after-school activities and extracurricular events. And we are still open to discussion on this, but our initial response would be, if it's a club that can meet virtually, such as, let's say, you're in photography club, and that club sponsor can still do those meetings virtually, and you're doing a virtual part of our virtual learning, then yes, you would. But that we would say if it's an in-person meeting, that we would say no. But like I said earlier, we still are ironing out those, that specific question. And then another question that's come up is, I have to go to work. I cannot stay home and manage my child's daily education. We are collaborating with community partners to figure out what we can to do, what we can do to support parents that are in that situation. So board, that's, and Dr. Duty, that concludes our presentation and recommendation for the board to consider.
This is the point where everyone should take a deep breath. That was a lot to go through. As you can see, there were many dozens of people who have contributed to this work, both staff and volunteers from the community, and hundreds and hundreds of hours have gone into this. So if we are going to stick with our original plan, I'm going to share my comments that I have about a couple of things. And maybe we share board comments and jump into the public comments was our plan earlier. Does that still sound like a good plan to jump to public comment at this point?
I think so.
I think so, yes.
So for a public comment, we have, it looks like about 12 people signed up. So if it's okay with you, Louis, we'll do it like we have on the other meetings, where I'll read off the names and Esten will put the timer up there, and we'll just kind of jump in. Does that work for you?
That sounds good. We should, we should repeat what we usually try to say before a public comment, which is that this is a time for folks in the community to address us about issues of general concern to the board. It's not a time to discuss issues related to individual people, whether students or staff. Those types of issues should be addressed through other channels, but not through public comment. Also, what's frustrating to many, but is our practice, is that generally, public comment is an opportunity for the public to speak to the board, but we generally do not speak back. There's a lot of reasons for that. Please don't be frustrated if you don't get response. We listen carefully, and we always take the comments to heart. We just are not prepared to respond publicly without having a discussion about them first. I think those are the general rules. So it's three minutes per speaker, and if David, you would let us know who's up. Oh, also, if you'd please begin your comments by letting us know not only who you are, your name, but your connection to the district so that we can, we can place you. Thanks.
So our first speaker is Marnie Grodzin. So each of you, as I call you, I'll click a little button that allows you to unmute your mic. So Marnie, I've done that for you. Once you're ready, go ahead and unmute. Or maybe I, yeah, there we go. And go ahead.
My name is Marnie Grodzin. I come to you as a parent of a DHS graduate and a rising ninth grader. I am also a business owner in the area and the youth development coordinator for Decatur Prevention Initiative. So thinking of kids from all aspects, I bring this to you. This is just coming food for thought. I don't necessarily anticipate a response back via email or whatever it is. Y'all have plenty on your plate. And I know your job is not easy, and I appreciate the time and efforts going into this. Still trying to wrap my mind around everything that was shared. Some of what I will say will probably be repetitive, but I guess it just kind of backs up what those of you at C S D have been putting together, and I appreciate that. So first thing I wanted to address, whatever format is chosen for school, I'm concerned about teachers and admins' health, all aspects of health, but more so mental. Like the consideration, I had some thoughts of staff circles so staff could give each other support, access to online programs geared to supporting teachers' health. And I'd like to see a place where community members can share bright spots regarding staff, admin, schools, and school board. A lot of information goes around, you know, in social media that is not supportive. And at this point, we need to be supportive and show grace for each other. Next, I'm not sure where the decision sits regarding school resource officers for C S D, but as we have heard in media, there's talk about reform in police departments, and some talk about getting rid of those. So what I would like to say, I'm talking very fast. In regards to our school resource officers, I hope that they stay. I'm not sure who makes the decision. Officer D'Amico at Renfro is well-connected to kids. He's nonjudgmental. He has previous experience with mental health prior to coming, as a professional, prior to coming to schools. He is a grounding force. He has been for me at Renfro as well as other teachers. And then when we look at Officer Robinson at the high school, he has experience working with youth in the past as a youth minister. While working at DHS, I have witnessed many opportunities where he has created rapport with students of all backgrounds. And last year, he was, was his first year at the school. You never would have known it. And lastly, for the sake of time, I would just, I'm curious if there are discussions as to how C S D can reform the American history curriculum that was somewhat addressed tonight. If so, who would do the work? And my hope is that youth would be included in this process. I thank you for this opportunity. I know we are all looking for the best for our kids and community.
Thank you, Marnie. I appreciate it. Our next speaker is Carmenique Harris. Carmenique, I have clicked to allow you to talk, so you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, thank you for this time. I originally wanted to talk about something else, but now that we're, I realize what the meeting was about, I just wanted to just continue to stress safety and health. One of the questions that I spoke with Dr. Huddleston about today was just making sure that we, on the F A Qs where you discussed, if a child could participate, if they're on virtually only, I was concerned about that. I, myself, and my mother are cancer survivors. And if my son is forced to make a choice between going to school and staying, you know, and having a social, you know, emotional life outside of this house, or choosing to make sure I'm safe and that my life is preserved, it's a very difficult choice for a 15 and a 13-year-old to make. And they want to go to school if everyone else is at school, but if everyone's home, then they understand they need to be home. So we're trying to work that out, but I want you to take into consideration saying that they cannot participate in any activities is a hardship, and it will impact them and have a lasting effect on them emotionally if they cannot participate with their, their peers because I'm sick and because their grandmother is currently, you know, finishing up chemo. So I just want you all to take that into consideration when you make that decision. It seems punitive and it's very harsh. And I think the families on a case-by-case basis should be allowed to make that decision based on what works for their family. Because my son's in band, and if they're practicing outside and they're practicing safety, I'm fine with him being there. But if you take that away from him because I'm ill, it's, it's not fair. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmenique. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Drew Newman. Drew, I am allowing you to talk. You could go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I think it's going to be largely a thankless task. You're not going to be able to please everybody, but my gosh, what a balancing act. I am deeply concerned that the August 17 opening is not enough time for staff and faculty to really get the kind of online experience put together. I texted a friend of mine who's on faculty. And I said, can you get it together in two weeks? And he said, sure, and I can put together a 747 in midair. Obviously, you know, you all understand all the concerns that are, you know, went behind that decision. I see that it's following the cab, but I'm very, very concerned that you're rushing this through. Getting effective online results and quality is exceptionally difficult, and I just don't think you're giving the faculty enough time. My second concern is that I think the board and C S D leadership needs to be very transparent about how decisions are being made in terms of evaluating which quadrant we are in, especially given that the landscape of reporting is changing rapidly today. It was announced that the CDC is being removed from data collection on COVID-19 reporting for the country. And we also know that the Georgia Department of Public Health has fiddled with their metrics. They went to backdating the reporting of their cases so that the case, so that the curve is continually looking like it's going down. So whatever that environment is, we don't have any control over it, but I would encourage you very strongly to be as transparent about that as possible because that truly affects everything. So I know lots of other people would like to speak. So thank you for giving me the time to contribute, and thank you again to all of you for your exceptional efforts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Drew. Our next speaker is Darcy Boo. Darcy, I am giving you the ability to unmute, and you can start when you're ready.
Okay. Hi, thank you all so much for everything you all do. We have a senior at Decatur High who's had an amazing 12 years, and our younger son who has an I E P, and he'll be going to Renfro in the sixth grade. I have a question you probably can't answer on here, but I want to know who is going to be the voice for the most vulnerable? And it sends chills up my spine when I look at the elite, very wealthy, with the million-dollar homes here in Decatur, driving their Tesla or BMW, applauding the virtual learning. Yet you have, I'm kind of emotional, yet you have kids that are in homes where they're either beaten, molested, abused, go-to-bed hungry. And what do we plan on doing with those kids? I'm a stay-at-home mom. There's no skin off my teeth. I can stay home and do virtual learning. But my issue is the many kids that can't. And my younger son is on the Decatur football team, and I know firsthand some of those kids. And I worry every night what's going to happen to them. It'll be great for the elite, and those are the million-dollar homes, but not everybody, or the working parents who are going to have to quit their job so they can be home. And I'm really sad, and, you know, we've lived here for 22 years, and it's really disheartening to see how it appears as though politics has really been a motivator in some people's decisions and their thoughts about this. And it'd be nice if we could take politics out of it and really just think about the kids because that's what's most important, and I'm worried about their physical, mental, and emotional health. That, that's a real concern. And then that's something that would be nice if we could all put politics aside and put the kids first. I'm a teacher myself. I teach pre-K, and I will be going back in three weeks. Is it my dream? No, but that's what I'm going to do. I'm a part-time, I do it not because we need the money, but because it's something I enjoy doing. And my last thing, we mentioned equity, and I just wanted to get some more information on exactly what we're going to be doing because I got a thing from Principal Weissman about some books and whatnot. And I'm just curious, you know, what the plan is for all that. But anyways, that's all I have to say. I really appreciate you all, and I would hate to be in your shoes right now because I cannot imagine the decisions you all were having to make. But thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Darcy. Our next speaker is Kunle. I am clicking the allow to talk button for you right now, Kunle. You should be able to unmute and begin when you're ready.
Hey, thank you very much, Dr. Duty. Thank you very much to the board. Really thank you very much to everyone and all the contributions you've made in this plan. I am really very excited. Thank you especially to Esten and the I T department for the focus on the digital divide and ensuring that everyone gets access. Please, please, please let us continue to place strong emphasis on that. I really like the fact that we are going to be tracking the internet usage or the usage of the online resources. That needs to, even beyond COVID, when we do return to schools, that is an early warning indicator for us to identify children who are falling behind. We must not wait till the end of the semester. Within two weeks, we can tell how many people have logged on, how many hours have consumed. And we must, we must as a school district immediately dump in. If we see you are below 50% of expected usage within your first two weeks, we need to just, you know, whatever the threshold is. I am also excited, but want some tangible, this is to Dr. Duty and the board, you want to address, finally, address the issue of discipline disparity. I am requesting that we meet with the, we constitute a committee at the high school level, teachers, parents, administration, to really tackle, give ourselves two months to figure out why do we have these disparities? What are the reasons? And issue some recommendations and be done with it. We should give ourselves this target. By the end of this school year, there will be no more disparity in discipline based on race. I forgot to introduce myself. I have a rising ninth grader, a rising sixth grader, and a two-year-old daughter who will be getting into the system at some point. I'm also the co-chair of the educational, of the Education Committee of the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights. But most importantly, we must end the disparity in discipline. Let's give ourselves this year no more. We'll never see it again in the history of Decatur after the end of this year. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Our next person on the list is Gail Rothman. Gail, I'm searching you up just a second. Okay. Yeah, there. You should be able to talk now, Gail.
Great. Hi, can you hear me? Great. Hi, everyone. I am a parent of a rising 10th grader, also married to a teacher, as many of you know. But today I am publicly commenting on behalf of Decatur Education Foundation and our strong partnership with City Schools of Decatur. First, I just want to express appreciation for all of the work that has gone into trying to figure out one of the most difficult situations imaginable, how to educate our kids during a pandemic. This is a problem for which unfortunately there are no easy answers, and in fact, no truly good solutions. And I think I can speak for many in our community when I say that no one is envious of your jobs at this point in time, whether you're board members or the administrators who all presented so much detailed information tonight. Like many in the community, I monitor the lists and the Facebook pages across Decatur, and I can really feel the stress and the angst that our families are feeling right now as they worry about their kids and also have to make really hard choices. And some of the public commenters have already talked about that. Also, as someone who's married to a teacher, I know that teachers in Decatur and also across our country are stressed and worried about their own health and the health of their children. But tonight, I just want to remind everyone that D E F, along with organizational partners, local businesses, and a lot of individuals are ready to tackle the challenges that we will face, both in the immediate future when, well, now that well, now that you are going to vote on the all-virtual plan, but also in the foreseeable future, once we do return to school at some point and ensure that all of our families have the resources they need. I just want to remind people that we are a community rich in resources, not just financial, but in creativity, problem solving, and collaboration. DEF is an expert in all the things that you all are, but we are experts in bringing people together to solve problems. And we at DEF are ready to work across the community to make sure that families have the support and resources and that we can get to the other side of this. We will be bringing together businesses and organizations who work with children as summer or aftercare providers to see what can be offered to families who might have urgent childcare needs. We're working with the Decatur Housing Authority to connect families with volunteer tutors and working with a coalition of agencies to meet food insecurity needs. When we see, when we say together, we make a difference, it's not just a tagline. It's the way this community has been operating for years. And while we may not have ever faced a challenge this daunting, I have no doubt that when we, we have what we need to successfully navigate the crisis. We don't know what the weeks and months to come will bring, but I know that DEF will work hard with everyone who wants to help and will solve the problems that we face together. I just want to express again our appreciation to the school board, to Dr. Doody, and to the staff for all of the work. And I hope that we can soon be on the other side of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Gail. Our next speaker is Micah Lubin. I'm clicking the allow to talk. You should be able to unmute now, Micah.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, you can.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to also thank the opening twenty twenty committee for their obvious amounts of hard work and efforts at this. It was an impressive presentation and very thoughtful, and it was clear that you had the health of the students and community and teachers and staff in mind. So I am the father of three kids in the district, a rising pre-Ker, a rising first grader, and a rising fourth grader. And I initially signed up to comment to ask about the pre-K situation, but that was answered nicely and is different from the information we got in July. I'm glad that pre-K will be following the district's quadrant strategy rather than a state mandate to be in person, which seemed reckless at the time. I wanted to just reiterate while I have the time that I'm very concerned about the safety of teachers and staff at the school. And I really hope that public health information, like Georgia Tech's quantitative bioscience risk assessment tool that was mentioned during the presentation, is used to assess the the risk that teachers are put in in various groups. Even right now, with just ten people in a classroom, the risk of having somebody in the classroom with COVID is thirty-four percent in DeKalb County. So keeping that in mind when we shift quadrants, I think, is key. I wanted to reiterate some of the great points that other speakers made. One is that I think that it would be better to have more training upfront and open a little later. What's the rush to open? Let's let our teachers get as much training as they need to make this virtual option work. I also wanted to reiterate that from a diversity standpoint, letting students who opt in for a hybrid or during a hybrid period who opt in for virtual learning, letting them socialize with people in the classroom, maybe virtually, is very important for achieving a diverse social education for our kids, not letting them become segregated de facto by the method of teaching they're receiving. I think that's important to stress. I also wanted to stress that a month to make a decision on what quadrant we move into might not be enough. I wanted you to consider perhaps extending the length of time that those decisions are made more than a month to to let teachers get going and blossom in the in the mode that they're using to deliver content. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was muted. So thank you, Micah. Our next speaker is Megan Ferguson. I have clicked so you can unmute yourself and continue when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Megan Ferguson. I'm a city Decatur resident, a parent of two CSD students and a CSD faculty member. I'm here to express my support for full virtual learning this fall. Firstly, as a community member, it's apparent per the recent data that COVID infections are spiking. With that, our consideration should be focused on limiting group sizes and thus the likelihood of adding to the infection rate. It's unimaginable that we would consider this measure given the countless essential workers who have already lost their lives. We cannot continue, we cannot communicate through our actions that their sacrifice was for naught. Secondly, as a parent, while virtual learning is less than ideal, I consider the health and safety of the community and I managed while teaching my own students. It was not easy. It was not convenient. I couldn't guarantee that a Zoom call would be uninterrupted. My house was a mess, and at times I was overwhelmed, but I willingly accepted this continued inconvenience for the safety of all of my children and by extension, their families. I completely understand that everyone has the privilege to work from home, and that is why I also urge us to find ways to support those families so that we can all stay safe. I know that a few months of mislearning will undoubtedly be impactful, but I am unwilling to put their lives at risk for learning. After all, is safety not the well-established foundation of Maslow's hierarchy? Learning must come after safety upon which we return. We cannot guarantee, no matter how much Lysol we manage to acquire. As faculty members, like many of my colleagues, my co-teacher and I worked diligently from March thirteenth until the end of the school year to cultivate a learning environment that was as close as possible to our in-person instruction, given the parameters laid out by CSD. This meant that I spent numerous hours on emails, chats, and videos to do whatever was possible to help my students. I hand-delivered math books to the homes of forty-five students. Once we learned, we could not return. I'm not alone in this beyond the Call of Duty service that many teachers did to continue to help our students. That's what teachers do. Not only do we educate, but we often extend ourselves, our money, our time, and more, and do so willingly. But to ask a teacher whose service was miraculously lauded at the height of the shutdown to risk their life for convenience or preference is inexcusable and highly offensive. There is a saying that I've heard often, "Those who can't teach." It is meant to diminish our craft, which is just as much an art as science, but undoubtedly a profession composed of the selfless altruistic individuals who have not ever been, nor will they likely be fully compensated for their efforts, and we are teachers anyway. So to ask me to put my life at risk and the life of my loved ones, including my students, on the line is the ultimate disrespect. We are not disposable. And if one teacher, one student, one person who didn't have to die dies and or suffers irreparable damage because of our preferences, that is a cost that will impact this community far more than some mislearning. So people are right, those who can't teach. Maybe now is the moment for the community to step up for those who can't and who shouldn't have to, and to help us teach their children just for a little while until we all can be safe.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate your comments. Okay, our next speaker is David James. Hold on, there's several Davids. Let me find you here. Okay, David, you should be able to unmute now.
Hi, my name is David James. I I have a rising fifth grader who has acute special needs, and I also have a kindergartner as well, who he's actually a rising kindergartener. This would be his first experience in pre-K, in kindergarten, excuse me. And while we do value the efficacy of face-to-face instruction, I thank the board for holding really our most precious and valuable resource that we have in this community, which is the health of the people who live in the community. Because while we can talk about, we can plan and optimize the the number of students that we have within groups, the the students that get infected in those small groups don't just stay within those small groups. They come home to their families at home. I have a wife who is an essential healthcare worker who's on the front line and sees patients day in and day out, who are already at the margins of society. I'm also an educator that comes in contact with students, some of which are working, some of which are at the margins of society as well. And being an educator, I myself voted at my own institution for us to continue on in the fall semester with online modes of teaching. Because if any of my students came down and got sick with the virus and I knew I had a hand in it, I wouldn't be able to deal with it. I've already had students who have fallen prey to this disease. So I thank you very much for holding really what should be our first and only consideration with respect to our students and our community members. Following on with that, what I would like some clarity around is the set of data points that you'll be using in order to progress to modes that will include face-to-face instruction. And I'd also, I'd also ask you to consider as well as a part of your plan with respect to that, that we have this new data point that almost half of the transmission of COVID nineteen come from individuals who are asymptomatic. So temperature checks, temperature checks can catch some individuals who are afflicted with COVID, but there are still many who will still come into the school building and transmit the virus. Thank you for letting me submit my comment.
All right. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. And our final speaker is Heather Malloy. Heather, I'm searching for you right now.
David, before we move to Heather, I understand there might be some folks out there who would like to speak. Can you give them instructions for how to go get on the list before we're done, so they can do that now?
Yes.
Next comment.
Yes, if they want to speak and they haven't, the item for public comment that's on the agenda, there is a link right there that they click on and they type in their information and then they appear on the spreadsheet. So we know that they want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so Heather Malloy, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Are you there, Heather?
Yep. Hey, sorry about that. I did not
No problem.
put myself on the list to speak. I thought I was just
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. No problem. No problem. Thank you. Okay, so that's all who are on the the list to speak. Do you want to wait a little while, Louis, or should we move on?
Well, no, I understand that there is Ayana Robinson who would like to speak, but I think probably hasn't figured out the agenda yet. I wonder if you could just Robinson is last name. I think it's
Anita?
Ayana or Elliot Robinson?
Elliot Robinson. I see that one. Okay.
Thank you.
Elliot Robinson. I just, I just made it so you can unmute yourself so you can speak.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm having trouble hearing the speaker. I'm sorry, Ms. Robinson. I'm having trouble hearing you. I think that your connection
Can you hear me? Okay?
No, it's not
Bad cell connection or something.
I'm sorry that the connection isn't working very well right now. If you want to maybe write your comments, you could send them to board@csdecater.net.
You might be coming through.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
They just fell off the list. I'm sorry that didn't work. I'm, I hope she was able to hear that, that she could email. And to anyone else out there, please feel free to email your thoughts to board@csdecater.net. And that goes to the five board members and to me as well. And that way we can see your feedback if you have additional thoughts to share that you you weren't able to. So. All right. Were there any others that you got notice of, Louis?
No.
Or Tasha?
Any other board members there? No. And something's happened. I've lost the screen.
I took the clock.
The presentation has stopped being presented, so.
I see. So I think now
So do you want to keep going with this item, or do you want to jump back to the agenda until we get to this item again?
Oh, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to continue to to finish this one up.
I do, too.
And maybe begin by letting the members, folks, ask their questions. Someone wants to
Yeah. If I can share a couple of thoughts. Jane had asked early on about making this an action item. And so now that you see what the recommendation is, any changes to the school calendar do require a board action. So if we are going to change the start date to August seventeenth, we would need to vote on that. Now, we could do that tonight. After we have our conversation, we could take a, have a motion and vote, or we could call a special meeting. We don't have another regularly scheduled meeting before the start of school. So that's the only thing that absolutely requires an action. If we, you notice in our comments that we threw out the possibility of basically canceling the September break. And we're suggesting that for several reasons. One, the idea of people traveling and then coming back is not a good idea from the experts that we have talked to. And that a break like that, especially at that duration, kind of encourages people to go elsewhere and come back and perhaps bring some virus into our community that wasn't there previously. But also because if we're going to lose several days on the front end, it's one way to start making up some of those days. So that's something to consider. We do not have to take action on that right now. That's something we can think more about. And we could discuss at the August board meeting, but those are both calendar changes, so those would require action. If the board wants to vote on a plan and feels that that is something that is important for you, you're of course welcome to do that. But really only the calendar change is what needs to be voted on.
So David, I I understand that the superintendent has the authority to make decisions for, you know, day-to-day operations and instructions. But I would like to suggest that in addition to voting on the calendar changes, that we vote on the proposed school reopening plan. Just because I know that, you know, our community members are looking at the school board members as part of the decision-making process and as evidenced by the emails that we are copied on. And I just, I support the the virtual plan. I think it's our safest way to ensure you know, the decrease, to increase mitigation in the in the district. But I think that we should take a vote, especially to set the precedence, because at some point, we're going to have to revisit that at some point. But right now, we're saying on September eighteenth, we're going to revisit where, you know, where we are and how things should go. So that's my suggestion that, you know, because I think that there potentially are fiscal and policy implications for this. And so we know that as school board members, those are the things we are responsible for. So that's my suggestion.
But if I could speak to that just briefly, I tend to agree with you. And I guess maybe for the folks listening, reading that it's even a question, because I think most people would expect the policy governance system that we generally try to follow. You know, policy governance is all about the delegation of authority to the superintendent. We set broad policies. We set goals and objectives. And we hire smart people to implement those. And we're best when we let them do their job. And so that's generally how we try to operate. I think we, you know, we try to enforce a fair amount of discipline so that we stay out of David's hair to let, you know, David and his people do what needs to be done. This seems like, I mean, this is such a big issue of such great concern to so many people. And it's really just kind of fundamental to everything that we're doing as a school district. It just seems appropriate for us to weigh in. If only It just seems appropriate for us to weigh in, if only, David, to let you know that you've got our support um and that we.
Well, I I was gonna say, there's no one on the administrative team who will who will say, we don't want you to weigh in and vote on it. Because the more people uh that have our back, the better. And if the board uh feels strongly about wanting to to do that, for whatever reason, it is not something we're opposed to in any way.
I caution us as a board that we can't let it be a precedent. We're gonna start reaching down into operations. Um, but I do think that this is unusual and warrants a vote.
Yeah, I agree with um with Jana and Louis on that. And I think, you know, my standpoint was that it would be, show solidarity to David and his team. Um, that we all agree um and are supportive of all the work that you've done on this. And that we agree and, you know, in solidarity with you, so. Um, and I I don't I don't think we should set a precedent, but this is definitely unprecedented at times, so um I concur.
Indeed, indeed.
I agree, and I I feel we're all in this together.
So.
Were there any questions or or comments about the plan itself that you'd like to discuss?
I mean, I I have some things that I would like to say.
Yes.
Um, I think there's so much here that I don't want to maybe say it all at once. And so as topics come up, I might chime chime in on them. But um, the the first thing that I really want to emphasize is just that our our priority being on equity work has never been more important. And Dr. Huddleston and and Dr. Banks have done a tremendous job of getting us to this point. And we have to dig in now more than ever, because I feel like this situation that we're in is going to create an even wider gap where there already were gaps and more disparity between students who have support at home and students who do not. Students who have learning disabilities and students who do not. Um, vulnerable populations who are vulnerable for many reasons. Vulnerable is not simply health. It's economic reasons, access to technology, access to meals, students who don't have a stable home. You know, I'm talking to people in the community who are single parents, who have lost their jobs, who are struggling to find new work or work from home when they're supposed to be teaching their ten-year-old. And just seeing how much of a struggle this is, which is why it makes this decision so difficult. And we're considering the needs of students, which I feel like at times are at odds with the needs of teachers. Which, you know, for for many reasons, I can think of no better place than kids to be back at school. And while for a long time I was hoping we were going to be able to do a hybrid model, I see why with the widespread you know, pandemic that we have and where we where it's ended up, why that's not a good idea right now. But um further, I want to emphasize that everything we're doing to support teachers' health is so important. And I I fully support requiring students to wear masks. I know that's not happening in every single district, but I think it's important because I feel like we have to do everything we can to protect our teachers. And I know that's consistent also with the fact that the city just passed a city ordinance last Friday, requiring masks in public places in the city. While it didn't reach out and include the school system, I feel like what we're doing is consistent with that, and I I fully support that. As we talk about vulnerable populations, and I looked through the presentation, there was one sentence about identifying students who are not attending or who are disengaged, and that they will receive support services. And I want to emphasize that I think that's extremely important, because I I know that there will be students who are not engaged and not attending, and that virtual learning is not for all of them. So I would like for us to explore in detail what those support services are. And to also explore, is there any way we can flex these quadrants? And have some in-person learning in small groups in safe ways with some of those most vulnerable students, especially those that have learning disabilities. We have received well, probably well over a hundred emails. I've lost count. I've read every single one of them, and I I want to thank the community for your input. It's been extremely helpful. It's guided us in our thinking and our planning. Please keep communicating to us and don't think that because you don't receive a personal response from every single one of us that you're not being heard. We are reading your emails and we want to hear from you. Um, but we've heard from some parents who have children with learning disabilities, and this one breaks my heart. Um, because I have a niece with learning disabilities, and I and I know my sister is struggling. Um, these kids need their physical therapy, they need their occupational therapy, they need their speech therapy, and these parents are saying that their children are regressing. And that's very heartbreaking. And I just wonder if we, in a safe way, can figure out, of course, with the with the support of the the teachers who would be involved and the parents' permission, but find a way to make that safe. Um, we're talking about extracurricular activities, which I also fully support for both those students who are in school, if we have a hybrid, and also for any student who's doing virtual learning. Um, I know that having nothing to do, no structure, for many kids is detrimental and to their to their mental well-being, to their social development. I think we should encourage actually extracurricular activities to the sa- to the extent that they're safe and that we should follow guidance that will that is coming out. We're expecting to hear from associations like the Georgia High School Association for Sports, which I think includes drama. Um, for music, the Georgia Music Educate Educators Association, and similar organizations that will be issuing guidance. Um, you know, I, my kids are swimmers, and the CDC and the National Swimming Association issued guidance for how to practice swimming safely. And I know I was really terrified of that and the whole concept of going back to any sort of practice or sport. But seeing how it was done and that it was done safely, it showed me that there is a way to do things safely. And it's been extremely important to have a few pillars of activity. And I think it can be really helpful and beneficial to students who are who are suffering. They're they're suffering socially, they're suffering emotionally, and I think they need connection with their friends. They're not not going to see their friends, like some, you know, especially when we're talking about high school students and middle school students, they're going to get together. So why don't we construct activities that are going to be beneficial for them and do them in a safe way? So I'm I fully support that if we can find a way to do it safely. Um, you know, there there are many, many things to say. I'll let other people have a chance, but those are just some of the the maybe the highest bullet points I had. And thank you for, I know that was long. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Heather. And I do want to clarify that the um, the hybrid option that serves less than fifty percent of kids. The exact purpose of that is to try to bring in groups of kids um to serve them um where we can. And that hopefully we can get to that um level of engagement sooner rather than later. We just didn't feel that we were there at this time.
David, I had a couple of questions. I heard a parent ask this earlier, and uh and we also got this question in one of the emails. I have a few questions. My first question is, uh, what risk assessment tool was used? Did you all use the Georgia Tech tool to determine what quadrant we're in now? That's one of the questions. I didn't know how we determine what quadrant we're in.
It's a great question, and I would love to be able to say, oh, we turned to this very reliable data source that everybody trusts, and that's how we made the decision. But unfortunately, um, there is no given single source of information. And that's why, yes, we did use that tool as one of the pieces of information. Um, we're using whatever data we can get our hands on. Um, and then that's also where we rely on what we call team science, which is the experts in our community who actually understand the the um, the virus, they understand epidemiology and how things get transmitted. They understand what's happening on the ground in our hospitals and things like that. So um, there is the hard in terms of actual numbers that we get from sources like that one. Um, but then there's also the anecdotal data we get from the experts that we talk to who are dealing with this within our community. Um, it's unfortunate. Um, I did think it was kind of funny that somebody would say, we can't politicize this issue, because um, we're doing nothing, nothing of the sort, right? Um, if we were politicizing the issue, we'd be going back to school, because that's what the politics are pushing us to do. Um, and we most certainly are not paying attention to the politics behind it, and we're paying attention to the science and the actual data that we can get from experts. So um, I'd like to say there's one single source, but there isn't. There's different sources that we're turning to um and making the best judgment we can from those. Because in in the absence of that um truly trusted expert that everybody can agree um is the expert, we turn, we're turning to our internal experts um to help us disaggregate all that and figure out what what exactly is happening within our community. So that that team science has a big role in helping us figure out which one of those quadrants we're in.
Okay. And then I'm still concerned about the um full reopening of ECLC and the Fraser Center. You know, if the, and I know that this is just one tool, but if that Georgia Tech tool um says that right now in a group of twenty-five, that likely there's one person that will have it, I'm just concerned. And I I was wondering how how the decision was made to go to a full reopening with um ECLC and the Fraser Center? And were parents given the same survey? Would they survey about the reopening? Because my my biggest concern is as a board member, again, because I know that folks are going to be holding us accountable. And I I have not, I've been having trouble just managing the stress of all this, knowing that students could potentially get sick, and we don't know how sick and the implications for their family members and their vulnerable family members. Um, and I just, I don't want to be responsible for a tragedy like that. And so I'm just wondering um, how did the ECLC and Fraser parents provide their feedback for the reopening?
So it's a little more complicated like like normal with ECLC and Fraser Center, because there's a whole different set of standards that apply to them. Um, they're part of different funding sources from the state and whatnot. Um, so the ECLC has been open um all summer. And um, one of the things to remember is their classes are naturally incredibly small, right? And so you may only have a a teacher and five kids. Um, and so something to remember, we're not talking about the pre-K, we're talking about the birth of three. And those classes are very small classes. Um, we've also had quite a few people who have decided they're not going to send their kids. And so the um number of people that we're serving is smaller than it was before. Um, it's also something that we're revisiting. We debated about it today. We're going to continue debating about it. And it's quite possible that we will change that decision depending on what's happening in the environment. Um, but at this point, um, we felt it was going very well at ECLC. They've got some really good controls in place. Um, and it is a very needed service, um especially for that age kids. Um, to be able to have um our doctors and our scientists and our all those frontline workers have a way to be able to take their kids somewhere to get care. Um, and if they don't get it there, they'll get it somewhere else, because there are a lot of childcare places that are open. Um, and so that is something we're very concerned about, and we are monitoring closely. Um, but it is a little bit different um just because of how the the funding works for it and um how the services are provided and the size of the groups, so.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
James?
Oh, yeah, I got him. Uh, so I had a couple of like teacher-related questions, David. And um, you know, I I think um that I had not clicked on that link when it went through the presentation about the opening and that sort of stuff and making sure the teachers have access to it. But I do want to kind of go through that about the process of opening it back up. And then what happens if if a teacher gets sick, not just from, you know, COVID, but just generally when they're teaching virtually and they're sick and it's communicated to them. How do you call in a sub? Um, and that sort of stuff. And I hope that we go through the process of communicating that. I think that's really important. Um, and then I was just kind of looking at the calendar. If we eliminate fall break, but then the teachers start on the same time, are they just working an extra week? Or how does that work? Has that been sort of discussed on what we're asking the teachers to do?
One of the reasons I, no, one of the reasons I thought we might want to put off the fall break discussion is because one way to solve that is to also cancel the winter break in February or to make some other kind of a change to the calendar. Um, if we don't do that, we will have to figure out how to pay teachers for an extra five days. Um, so one way or the other, we'll have to figure out how to cover it. I'm not a fan of just shortening the school year, as we've talked about before. But um, there are some other opportunities for how to make up those days and still pay teachers for every day that they work. We are not going to ask teachers to work and not get paid.
Okay. And then and then, you know, it doesn't necessarily fall on teachers, but um, both Jana and Heather mentioned it. I think having a plan in place, um, and Kunal was excited about it. Um, you know, just reaching out when a kid does fall off from not um, not being involved in the online and the Zoom calls, I think, is fundamental to to the the enhance. And I loved seeing that and having that in place. To me, that's the defining characteristic of what's enhanced about it. You know, if a kid doesn't show up for two days on uh on virtual classrooms, whose job is it to make sure that they show up on day three? Whose job is it to check in on them and that sort of stuff? I think that's.
I I totally agree. And it's one of the things, because we were talking about, we have a lot of employees who can't provide their services virtually. So, for example, bus drivers or paraeducators, or so there's just various employees that it's difficult for them to provide their normal employment routine. And so we talked about developing a training for those employees, so that if they want to continue working, which I would imagine most of them would, they can take this training on, how do you connect with kids? How do you serve as a mentor? And we can assign them several kids, and that can be part of their work then, is helping make sure that kid is engaged and checking in with them and helping troubleshoot, right? So if the family is having difficulty with a student getting stuff done, they can be that liaison to help figure out, hey, is it a motivational difficulty? Is it a technology problem? Is it some resource you don't have? Is it just a misunderstanding? Do we need to get an interpreter? Like, what is it that's causing the problem that so that we can attach it? So, or attack it? So um definitely, it's it's kind of a good problem to have, to have these staff who might be available to do that work. And so we're talking about the um, the difference in how we're planning to do it for the fall is the training aspect. We tried to implement that um in the spring, and it worked to varying um levels of success. Um, not everybody who's in a job that doesn't work directly with kids every day is ready to take on a role like that without training. And so that's one of the things that we plan to do this time is provide some training to them of what exactly does it look like if you're going to be a mentor to five kids or something like that? So, totally agree.
And then I, something that I have seen proposed by a lot of a a lot of parents is sort of like a um small quarantine educational groups. I know for my neighbor, we kind of did some education together, and it and it became harder when we weren't on the same page. But it does make parenting easier, particularly with a with a third grader or kindergarten if they're on the same curriculum. Um, has there been any discussion um about maybe making it possible for that to be considered as we begin putting some of those virtual classes um together? I just wanted to throw that out. It it occurred to me and a couple of parents reached out to me. Um, that as our neighborhoods do that, if that's something that the cabinet had considered or could see if they would consider for that. Um, another, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I don't, that's a good question, actually. I I'll need to talk to them more about the like neighborhood type approach. Um, I do know we've talked about, and and Gail Rothman kind of alluded to it, to um trying to work with our partners. That if at some point we feel like we can bring some small groups together, especially kids who have greater needs or something, um, um, kind of facilitating that. Um, but that's a great idea of maybe we could try to be more intentional on the front end. Um, so that proximity-wise, maybe group kids together a little differently. Um, I don't know if that's been discussed or not, but if it hasn't, we'll definitely discuss it.
I know we don't want to, I I I've personally witnessed a principal be overwhelmed with parents being like, you know, Johnny wants to be in the class with Suzie and da-da-da-da-da. But this does seem like unprecedented times for making what Tasha talked or what Jana talked about with with parents, you know, being able to take advantage of each other. And then um, my other question was answered about like step-by-step for open, and and Louis had asked it earlier. But just like what data points, I think, we're looking for as we move from quadrants, I think the community will be looking for and that sort of stuff. Will be at the front of everyone's mind. But that's it. That was all my list for now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, I had a question about student class size, um with it being. With it being virtual, are we still? Want to stay with what we've normally done with student class size or is there going to be some type of adjustment there?
Well, we have to stay pretty close to our normal student class size because otherwise we have to hire a bunch more people. Class size is probably the number one determinant of how many teachers we need. And so what we're going to try to do is supplement those classes then with that extra support like. Potentially bus drivers, para educators, things like that, that we can use in other ways that we traditionally wouldn't be able to use them otherwise. So but in in general, we have the number of teachers that determine the class size as it is. So, yeah, so they'll stay about the same.
Perfect. And I I know that you all have put a ton of work into this, so, you know, as I said prior, I do support. This direction and I would also support if you feel like potentially another week could be. Or may be needed in order to get the teachers and everyone up to. To where they feel comfortable with this new learning type of learning, virtual learning, I would support maybe even additional week. To to get everything up and running. So I don't know how locked in you are on the August seventeenth date. But if if that is something that you all were tossing around, you know, needing a little more time, I would be in support of that as well.
Um, I think with the August seventeenth date, I I get the comment the person made about building the airplane while we're flying it because we're all feeling that. And it's something that everybody in the entire education ecosystem is doing. I I think it's. It's plenty probably to get us started on a good on a good road. We'll have to see if. As we look at our plans and that maybe it wouldn't be sufficient, but I really do think it will be sufficient. I think anyone can always desire more, right? And can you get a little bit more with a little bit additional PL probably? But at some point you get some diminishing returns. And so I think it's also important to get started on the school year. And so we're trying to kind of balance that out between providing that PL, but also getting kids back to school. So it's a great point and we'll talk it over and and let you guys know if as we really dig into the details of what every single day is going to look like. I know the team has already developed a schedule of what the PL would look like and felt comfortable with it. But it's good to know that there's some support potentially for changing that if we need to, but I'm comfortable right now with saying we could stick with the August seventeenth date.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I had.
I'll I'll start by echoing everybody else's thanks and praise to you and your team for the hard work and putting this plan together. Really does show that you're, you know, you're taking the right considerations. In in mind and and working hard to produce a good plan. It's insane. And I don't think we think enough about just how crazy it is. That not only are we having to figure out how to reinvent, you know, public education, but we're basically having to do it on our own. I mean, there's a lot of resources to draw from, but this is a giant task to put on you and your staff. And with basically no time and. Kind of no, no room to fail. I mean, we just, we have to do it and it's, you know, I'm feeling lots of stress. I think the rest of the board members are feeling stressed. We're not even doing the work. So thank you to to you and your your folks for a good and thoughtful plan. I do think it's a. Plan and I and I support the suggestion. Some of the questions that I had, and the first is more of a comment, which is that I think that it would be good to address. Our compliance, which is not the right word, but it's the word I'll use with the CDC. Recommendations or guidelines for K through twelve. Systems, you know, I took a look, those are posted and contrary to what had been reported, they were not changed after the president's comments. So they're the same guidelines that CDC put out originally. And it looks to me like we are in compliance. Now they apply not to virtual education. But if, and well, when we return to schools, the guidelines say, here's how you do it safely. And there's no good choices here. The online education option, I think, right now is what we have to do, but I also appreciate the comments and just believe that that is so far from ideal. That we need to lean into putting the schools together and doing what needs to be done with the facilities. Into our programming to make sure that we can get into one of these hybrid models just as soon as we can. And, you know, the CDC guidelines go to things like screening and testing procedures for when kids arrive at school. So try to keep the virus out of the buildings. And they go to things to make sure that if kids slip through with the virus before we have really good testing. How we can make sure to limit the transmission through hygiene, through screens and appropriate places. Good ventilation. I appreciated seeing that you all addressed this in your HVAC. The the new filters to be put on the HVAC systems. Et cetera. But really, what I wanted to emphasize is, and we've had this conversation, is that you guys have looked at that and and that we are. Working to make sure that we. Check those boxes so that we can return safely to school just as soon as we can. While we're in the online environment, I I want to repeat and. You don't need to hear it because you've already heard it from the speakers and the other board members. But it's so hard, you know, someone asked who's going to speak up for the for the for the forgotten kids. And it's so hard to look at this through the perspective of the kids that you know and the experiences that you've seen and to forget how many struggles. So many of these kids are going to have and and some of them might surprise you, but I just, I just know for a fact that the online education just doesn't work for everybody. And there are kids who have problems, not just with accessing technology, but learning online and regulating themselves and getting out of bed. And 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 keeping to a task and 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 getting the work done. When they're not in a regular school environment, you know, waking up Monday through Friday and getting to school. At eight o'clock or whenever school starts and just keeping that regular schedule is an important part of keeping a lot of kids. Regular. And if they don't have that and we're just asking them to complete their tasks when they complete them. Not everybody's going to do it. And so the mechanisms that we put in place. To make sure that kids are actually keeping on a schedule, I think, are extremely important. I think synchronous learning instead of asynchronous learning. So you're expected to show up. And have some social interaction. We just, you know, that's what we need to be pushing, in my opinion, to the maximum extent possible. And then the safety net so that we're actively looking for the kids who are falling through the cracks and there are going to be a lot of them. And we need to have mechanisms in place. We don't have them yet. I mean, we did not have them yet to the degree that we need them last year. So, and again, I know you need this, but I just want to emphasize how important I think it is. Regarding the metrics, you know, the quadrant is helpful. I kind of think of it as just an escalating risk. If it's in the least risk environment, you're full open and the greatest risk environment, you're full online. And in the middle, there's varying degrees of hybrid models. The metrics that we use to move from one to another. I'm comfortable with your group science approach because I don't know what else we would do in the current environment. I'm also sensitive to the comments that were made about the desire for transparency and decision making. And I just put that to you to ask how we can. Address that. And I think what it means is that when we make these decisions, we tell people what the group scientist said and we just explain the basis of it. It doesn't mean. That it needs to be quantitative, but we can say we made this decision and here's why. And no, it's not based on a number. It's based on the the sense of of the scientists and the and the medical professionals that we we talk to. We just need to tell people why we're doing what we're doing. It's tricky when the metrics are unclear. But we should give that some thought. I also was interested in the comment about the timing between decisions. And. You know, number one, should we take additional time in order to get the online program all that it needs to be before we started? I understand the impulse. I think I agree with you that we just need to get started. But we also need to recognize that as we get started, it's not going to be all that it needs to be. It's it's going to be a work in progress. So we're going to have a lot of work to do to get the online learning where it needs to be. At the same time that we're going to need to have a team working hard to figure out the hybrid models. To 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 make sure that we can move into a hybrid model and have in person. Education just as soon as possible. It's going to be real hard to do those things both well if we're flipping back and forth constantly. And so I think that it really kind of argues for longer periods of time. And each, you know, with each decision, having a longer period that we'd be in whatever quadrant we're in. So that we're not, so that we can try to perfect what we're doing rather than constantly shifting back and forth. That's just a thought. I I also wanted to speak to the to the the question about extracurricular participation. And for the reasons that have been mentioned, I strongly feel that we should. Let families do this risk analysis themselves, but if they conclude that. That their child functions well in an online environment. But also would 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 need the extracurricular involvement. I think we should let them make that decision. I think it makes perfect sense. If the concern or the reason to exclude those kids from the from the in person extracurriculars. Had to do with the fear of, you know, mixing. I would tend to think that the kids who've been online learning would be the least likely carriers of all. And so to me, it seems like a misplaced fear and but but if it, but if that is a, we should, we should think about how to address it and just give it more thought. That's all that I have on my list. And those, that's just sort of for your consideration as y'all continue to perfect these plans.
I have one other question, but were there any budget increases? Related to mitigation?
No, we do all of our efforts so far within our existing budgets by reallocating money or buying things. The one challenge, as you heard in the presentation, is you you pay thousands dollars, thousands of dollars of hand sanitizer. And then weeks later, the FDA says that's toxic. So now you can't use it. So now you have to, you know, throw it out and find another source. So we'll see if there if there are going to be any long term budget implications. But we do have other funding sources that have come online because of it. We've got stuff like from the the CARES funds that you've heard about that we've been able to allocate. So at this point, there has not been budget implications, but there very well could be depending on the how long this goes on. A lot of the mitigation efforts are more about kind of rearranging what you're doing than doing something totally new. So that hasn't been a too big of an issue for us at this point. To a couple of Louis's point, I I won't remember them all, but a couple of the CDC guidance has been a very big part of how we've decided what needs to be done. Especially like you said, once you return to any kind of in person environment. And so the teams have been working on that all summer. And looking at that guidance and that's been a big part of what they look at. The the reason for the September eighteenth, looking again for a potential change after September twenty fifth is because we work on six week terms. And so the six weeks after August seventeenth is September twenty fifth. And so that's the reasoning behind it. I totally agree. The one thing that we all agree on is that you don't necessarily want to move into something without being fairly certain of that change. Because if we did go to an in person mode of operation and suddenly there were huge spikes in cases. We could then have to very quickly jump out of that mode of operation back to virtual. And so it is not something we will do lightly and we really have to have that confidence that there are mitigation measures in place and the spread is. Is not significant before we could do something like that. So just because we're reevaluating after six weeks doesn't mean that we would anticipate making any kind of major change. We just felt like we had to put some time. It's kind of the, here's the minimum that will at least look at it this frequently. We can look at it more frequently if we need to, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to make a change every time we look at it. So that's our thinking on those.
I have one more following on Jana's comment. That I appreciate that you haven't had budget impacts yet, but speaking for myself, if there's a time to spend money. It's now. And if we need to spend money in order to make the school safe and get back into school. I hope that you will talk to us about that rather than ruling it out based on the fact that it it might cost money. The the biggest example I can think of is the Times reported just the other day that. An instant. Check, you know, saliva test is likely to be prepared in short order. I mean, they were saying in a matter of weeks. That you could, with your saliva, get a get a response in fifteen minutes. If we could have a test. And it was supposed to cost a dollar per test, and so it would be manageable. So if that kind of thing comes available, we need to spring for it because, you know, once we could test the kids, we could get them into buildings with a high degree of safety. But just don't let the budget.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. And and we talked today quite a bit in the administrative team about budget implications and that. If there are any budget issues, that cannot be a reason to stop going down a path. That it needs to be a further discussion and don't just assume that. You not having money in your budget right now as a specific administrator means that we can't do something that would benefit all of the district or would benefit the. Where we go forward. So they're very well aware of that and we will definitely bring to you. If we get to a point that we have to look at the budget and consider dipping into our unspent balance. To figure out how to do something like that, for instance, like what you just shared, Louis, we most certainly will be coming to you to talk about that.
I'd like to revisit the conversation about the fall break. I know you said we could decide later, but just from my past experience on the board, the longer we take to decide something about a break, the harder it is for the community. People like to plan, people like to know. So i- if the other board members are willing, I'd be willing and interested in having that discussion today.
And just to be clear, I'm very comfortable with you all making a decision on that today. I just wanted to throw it out there as, just so you knew, there is another meeting before then, but I totally agree, Heather, the more notice people have, the better off that it it will be. So I'm I'm certainly open to that as well.
So I just need to to clarify. So let's say when. Central office staff and Dr. Duty reevaluate whether we should continue in quadrant three. And we vote now whether we're going to, but how will that? I'm I'm confused about.
Here's a, here's how I would say it, Jana, is that to me, there's there's two purposes for the cancelling of the September break. One is it allows us five days of time with the students. That we would not have had otherwise, so that we can continue since we're, because we're moving to start date. It gives us five more days early on in the year, not knowing what this year is going to look like, right? And so that's probably the biggest issue for me is knowing that we just have that consistency. The other is just that concern about as soon as you have a break like that and people start leaving the community and coming back. It may introduce virus into the system and may force our hand, even if it's looking like we might be able to go to a hybrid. Just having that break would almost necessitate pausing and not making a decision right away. Because you'd have to wait and see what happens after people return from the break.
That makes total sense. I thought it now.
And I I'm thinking that, you know, especially the elementary school level, I remember the first week, six weeks of school were always such a big deal. And, you know, trying to keep things consistent for especially our younger children. And that after only having, you know, five weeks in school and having a week break when we're talking about consistency. Here and, you know, getting good at what we're doing, it it seems too soon to have a full week off to me. And especially because we're losing calendar days already at the beginning of the year. And like you said, we don't yet even know what the rest of the year is going to look like. So while I know that my kids will probably be mad at me. And I know that how much our community loves a fall break, I feel like it's prudent in this case and and the right, you know, the right thing to do for. Our number one priority, which is. our number one priority, which is in the best interest of our students and their education that we cancel fall break this year and that we have the consistency that we need.
Makes sense to me.
And then what do we do about the workdays? We'll just pick some later.
So that is something we'll want to tackle later at that point. We can look at that. I'm not too concerned. Five days, it's not insignificant, right, of paying teachers for an additional five days if we don't end up being able to somehow make them up another way. But it is something that I think I I would much rather just make our decision now because it is so helpful to have those five days in this first six weeks for all the reasons we talked about and and figure that part out later, if you're comfortable with that. I'm I'm certainly comfortable with that.
Okay.
So do we have a motion? Think there's two things that we've talked about, to schedule what you know is the plan.
Yeah, so I would recommend a motion to the extent of a motion to start the 2021 academic year on August 17th with all instruction provided virtually and to cancel fall break. Or something to that extent.
I'm motion to start the 2020 year, 2021 academic year on August 17th with all instruction provided virtually and cancel fall break.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
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 I think we're unanimous.
Thanks, everybody. We appreciate it. And again, I just so appreciate the team that I work with. I know that it sounded like a broken record now, but man, I will I will put these people up against anyone. They are fantastic and and you can see it, I think, in the plan. And I know that our teachers are going to be able to implement this and I can't think of any other place I'd want my kids than in Decatur schools. So I know we're going to do well. We're going to power through it and we're going to all come together and and work it out. So appreciate your support and I appreciate all the support of the community who's been helping out with this as well.
All right, that takes care of.
Yeah, so I think we should go back and if we could approve the minutes.
Yeah, I want to I want to just ask if anyone, I mean, we've been at this now for three hours. Do we want to take a five-minute break or do we just want to power through the? We haven't, you know, we haven't started the rest of the agenda that we don't have too many action items. Basically, we've got, we adopt the final millage rate. That will be short. And we've got the update on district operations, which we've read.
Which I was going to recommend. You've got it there. I don't think we need to go through that unless you really want us to.
No, I think that's a good idea. I think we we can ask questions if we have them. I don't. Okay, that that means power through. So let's adopt the minutes. And I'm sorry, but I don't have right. There was a link. Ah, here there, it's the minutes.
It's the minutes for June 9th.
June, June 9, which I have read, I just couldn't find them. June 9, 2020, board meeting. Do we have any revisions to the minutes? There's one that's been mentioned in terms of excluding.
Change was made that was emailed, that request, I think it was made.
Any other, any other changes? Okay, so the minutes will be entered as presented.
So did we want to jump to the millage rate item then?
Yes. Yes, it's the millage rate. Take it away.
And and do you want us to go through the presentation again? Or since we just did it earlier, is that sufficient?
I think we just did it right before this meeting started, so.
Yeah, okay. So for the the millage rate item, we just need a a motion to adopt the millage rate at 20.25, which is the same millage rate that we had last year.
Do you have a motion?
Okay, move to approve the millage rate at 20.25.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, so unanimous. Before, so the last item we've we've scratched unless y'all have questions about the update, in which case we should ask now. And then I've got one other item I wanted to mention.
Yeah, the only other thing we have is the senior homestead exemption is on the agenda too, so.
For an update?
No, no, I I'm not sure if we have an update or if it was just there as a placeholder.
Well, that's what I wanted to address that. So 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 let's first see if people have questions about the update. Seeing none, let's move to to that item. James, if you could give us an update on the committee work.
The committee met June 3rd. Paula Collins, the chair, presented detailed graphs and maps on a homestead exemption focused on housing that attempted to model what a housing exemption would look like that met the existing S1 exemption. So for people whose income was low, it led to a great conversation about sort of like how low would we have to go. I'm sorry. Yeah, how low would we have to go on income? There were a set of questions that the committee had asked that I had emailed out to the group just to get answers to lead to another July group. And we have a couple of more meetings. We're dealing with just sort of income and housing prices. And the committee, I mean, it's once again, just overwhelmed with how amazing Decatur is and the quality of people that show up when the call is put out asking data questions and all sorts of stuff like that.
Just to clarify, did you say the meeting was at June, you said June 3rd, but did you mean June 30th?
I did, I did. Yeah. Three hours ago, that would have been a more enunciated 30th, but.
So, thank you, James. Do you have any questions about that? I I wanted to to say a word about where we are on the annexation issue with DeKalb County. As y'all know, we have, and I'll back up and provide a little context in just a second. But we have requested that the Decatur City Commission institute a one-year moratorium on annexations. That item is going to be on the agenda for the city commissions meeting. I think it's on the 20th, which I think is Monday next week. And they've asked that we appear to explain and speak, you know, to the request, which I will do and would appreciate any of you appearing to be there as well. By way of explanation, you know, this is the continuation of the issue that we've had for the past two years where DeKalb County is concerned about the financial impact of annexations by the city of Decatur on the DeKalb County school budget. The way that we finance education in the state of Georgia is that, you know, schools are funded by property tax dollars. And when an annexation occurs, the property tax dollars shift. And the existing law is that the property, that the school boundaries grow when the city boundaries grow. And we have co-terminus boundaries. That's just the way it is. But what that means is that when the city annexes county property for reasons having nothing to do with schools, it does have an impact on DeKalb County's schools' budget. That's an issue for the Kev County. It's not really an issue for us in the sense that we aren't advocating annexations, aren't interested in annexations, and don't really want to be part of this dispute, or have. What we have proposed to try to make a fair and equitable solution to the DeKalb County Schools' problem is that we find a way. Well, let me back up. What we don't want is to separate the city boundaries from the school boundaries. We want all of the kids in the city of Decatur to go to the city schools of Decatur. And we want all of the residents in the city of Decatur to be represented on this school board and to be fully 100% a part of the city and a part of the schools. It's important for a lot of reasons that have to do with the cohesion and community and and identity of this community and with our 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 cooperative arrangements with the city commission, which are going to get mighty complicated if our boundaries are separated so that some residents are part of the city but don't participate in the benefits provided by the school system. Once we separate those boundaries, things get complicated. And we're going to lose a big part of the cooperation and collaboration that has really made Decatur a special place. So what we're fighting to preserve is just that. It's not about the money. And so what we've proposed is an arrangement whereby in the event of an annexation, the school boundaries would grow along with the cities, but the taxes would be handled differently. And we would find a way basically to lit to give to the DeKalb County School System to allocate to the DeKalb County School System all of the taxes from any annexed area except the amount needed to educate the children in the annexed territory. So we would take only what we need in order to educate those children. And and the Kev County School System would get the rest. That gives us what we need in terms of preserving the identity between the city and the school system. And it gives the DeKalb County School System what they need by keeping them whole in terms of taxes. In fact, I think they might be, well, I think it's a win-win. There's some legal complications, but what we've asked is for the DeKalb County School Board to work with us to work those complications out. And if there's a will, there's a way. I'm confident of that. And, you know, we need a, we need some cooperation from the DeKalb County folks in order to make it happen. But what we're asking our city is to give us a one-year period so that we can work on the work on those arrangements to try to come up with something that would work for both of us. So that's what this is all about. I wanted to mention it here so that it's not a mystery when it's presented at the city commission meeting next Monday. And if is as many of you who can come to attend that city commission meeting, that'd be great. And we can talk about how to do the presentation. If you have any questions, you can ask now or you can ask later either way. Well, that's that's all I have. And I think, well, we have future dates, actually, David.
Yeah, we don't have a future date listed there, I noticed, but we do have our upcoming board meeting, so we'll make sure those get published, but I don't have them right off the top of my mind.
I will say, if I can jump in with the senior, the senior homestead committee meeting did talk about the intersection of our senior because the tax exemption and the annexation issue, they felt have gotten kind of tied up, Louis, and so and so we did spend a big chunk of the meeting with them asking questions that are at the bottom of the notes just about the way the DeKalb delegation proposed a bill at the end of the session that passed the House that that deals with, you know, senior taxes, that sort of stuff. And they had asked that we reach out and just make sure that as we do that and as we talk with the city, we ask the city to communicate on behalf of what we're doing, what our plans are long term. And so if you could ask that, add that to their agenda, I think that would be important.
We'll do that. That was a very disappointing bill. All four of our legislatures signed on to it and you know, all we can do is try to continue working towards a fair and equitable solution. And that's what we're going to continue to do.
Absolutely. I just thought it was appropriate to bring that up there.
I appreciate it. So I missed it on future dates. Did you have any that were listed?
I don't have them. I I'm not sure why they're not there, but I don't have them listed, but we'll make sure they're on our calendar and whatnot.
And then we had discussed or are we going to, would now be the time we would schedule this specially executive session?
I think we can, as we feel we need it. Just so folks know, we did not have an exec session tonight. And so we talked about possibly scheduling a special one. But I think that's something we can do through a doodle poll or something like that to figure out the best day for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks to everybody who stuck with us. And good night.
And David dropped from 600 to less than 200, but hey, there's still almost 200 people there. And how many would we have at a normal board meeting? So thank you all who who made it to the end. They're they're dropping off quickly, but thank you for making it. I appreciate it. It's really great that we had so many people who were interested and and stuck in there to hear what work we're doing. So and thank you to the five of you. I appreciate it. It's great to work with you. And these are crazy times. And so I feel like we've got the right people on the work though. So thank you all.
Night, guys.
Good night.
All right, good night.